Pueden pasar con nuestro equipo de intérpretes al fondo de la sala del Concilio de la Ciudad para recibir asistencia. Si prefiere ver la transmisión desde su computador o dispositivo móvil, puede seguir toda la junta completamente en español en la página web sanantonio.gob-tbsa, o también desde su televisor usando el sistema SAP en los canales que ve en pantalla. Por último, no olvide descargar la agenda de esta junta en la página web en español de la Ciudad de San Antonio en sanantonio.gob-español.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our City Council A session. The time is eleven ten a.m. on the third day of April 2025. We'll call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Miki Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Villagrán. Councilmember Rocha Garcia is here virtually, or supposed to be. Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Cabeo Haberta. Councilmember Aldereta Gavito. Councilmember Palais. Councilmember Courage. Councilmember White. Mayor Nierenberg. Mayor, we have Corr.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our City Council A session. To get us started today, I'm going to turn the floor to Councilmember Aldereta Gavito to welcome our invicator.
Thank you, Mayor. I am honored and delighted to introduce today's invicator, Father Jude Ofor. Father Jude serves as a parochial vicar at St. Paul's Catholic Church in District Seven. Born in a small rural village in Nigeria and raised by loving parents who worked as farmers, Father Jude was taught the values of hard work, compassion, and devotion to his Catholic faith from a young age. From the age of sixteen, Father Jude felt called to serve the Lord, and he began his journey towards priesthood at that time. He was eventually ordained into the priesthood in 1999 and has been serving various communities and parishes ever since. Some of his unique efforts include establishing youth programs in underprivileged areas, providing spiritual guidance to prisoners, and advocating for social justice. Thank you for joining us today and for dedicating your life to selfless service. With that, I'll turn it over to Father Jude.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, God of boundless love, mercy, and compassion, we gather before you today with grateful hearts. We thank you for bringing us together as a community and for the privilege of serving our great city. As we convene this session of our city council, we humbly ask for your divine guidance and wisdom. Watch over our city and its leaders that we may work together for the common good, protect and bless our public servants who tirelessly serve our community. Remember those among us who are struggling that we may be instrument of your mercy and compassion. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that promote justice, equality, and peace. May your action be guided by your heavenly principles, and may we always seek to do what is right and just. We thank you for this new day, filled with possibilities and promises. May we use it to make a positive impact on our community. We offer all these prayers through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hyatt. All right, before we begin anything today, our city team, our city family, and specifically the District Six family, lost a valuable member of our community this week. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Cabeo Haberta to recognize our beloved District Six member.
Thank you, Mayor. This is truly a privilege for me to talk about my friend today, to honor someone who's not just a part of our District Six team, but he was family. Our friend and colleague Martín Trevino, who many of you knew passed away last month. I met Martín eight years ago when I first decided to run for office. He asked to meet with me, and over lunch, we talked about San Antonio, the city he loved so much. Even then, I could tell he's someone who truly cared about his community. And if you knew Martín, you know he didn't waste words. He was a man of quiet wisdom. When he spoke, you listened because what he had to say always mattered. When I took office, Martín was there from day one. In fact, he's the only staffer I've had since the first day in office. He saw me through the early days of the pandemic, winter storm Uri, protests, difficult budget decisions. He was a steady presence in the room. He offered sound counsel and the occasional sharp-witted remark to keep things in perspective. He didn't ask for credit. He would hate that we're doing this right now, by the way. He didn't seek the spotlight. He just did the work because that's who he was. Martín passed away on March eighth, and while I miss his advice, what I miss most is his humor. Even this morning, my staff and I were sharing our memories of him. We found ourselves laughing because that's what Martín did. He could always find the humor in a situation, and even now, he's still keeping us laughing. His son Anthony shared something that really stuck with me. He said his dad was always a behind-the-scenes guy, not looking for credit, but always doing the right thing, and that was Martín. Before he ever stepped into public service here in San Antonio, Martín served our country. In 1974, he enlisted in the U.S. Army, serving with the Medical Specialist Corps as a nurse in a burn unit. He carried that same sense of duty throughout his life, whether it was at Via Metropolitan Transit where he worked for 26 years, or in District Six where he spent over a decade making our neighborhoods better. He actually worked in District Six longer than any council member has. He worked for three District Six council members and was loved and respected in all corners of our district. Our community knew, as we did, that we could count on him, to listen, to find solutions, and to be our friend. Martín loved coffee. He loved Blue Bell Pistachio Ice Cream and his Tejano music, especially Little Joey La Familia, but most of all, he loved his family. Virginia, Anthony, Romanita, all of his loved ones, please know that Martín will always be a part of the District Six family, too. So today, I ask all of you to take a moment, send up a prayer, a joke, and remember our friend, Martín Trevino. Martín Trevino presente. And today, we have Virginia and Anthony and Romanita. We have State Representative Ray Lopez, who was a former District Six councilperson and boss to Martín, and former councilman Greg Brockhouse, who Martín also worked for. So I'll invite Virginia and Anthony and Romanita up. And gentlemen, if you want to come up as well. Ray and Greg. Do you have a few words, Anthony? Go ahead. Yeah. Go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor Ron. Thank you, Melissa, for this gift that you're giving to us today and this recognition. I'm sure it's going to hit me a little bit more when I get into the car. So thank you for giving this to my mother and I today. And to Mr. Brockhouse and State Rep. Lopez, thank you for valuing, and of course, the work that he did in the community. I know he was very proud of his neighborhoods, and he cared very dearly about what he did. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. And this is very true. Greg, do you want to have a few words?
I haven't been in this room in six years, and I wanted to come here to honor my friend. That's how important he was to me. And to do that, I wanted to speak from my heart about the value of these men and women who serve us on our staffs. If you do the job right, right? You hire the right people, they become good employees, and over time, if you get it right, they become friends. And then if you really get it right, they become family. Martin was that, as Mario Hune was that as well to me. So to lose two of my guys in nine days is... I really don't know what to say, other than the value of these men and women who serve us, the humility to serve our dreams. And I hope each of you remembers that, that Martins of the world and the Marios, they serve your dreams, and they do it with humility, and they'll never get the credit, and they show up every day when we don't even take the time to know each other. We just fight over politics and these things that ultimately don't matter, because at the end of the day, we go back to these people, and they're doing the work that really mattered. I love my friend. I'm here to honor him today, and just to remind you the best way I can that the value of these people, the humility for which they serve, and the community that is valuable to them, beats all of this stuff we worry about. So please honor Martin by honoring your staff and being thankful for the aides and the men and women who simply are there for us. So Godspeed, my friend Martin. I love you, my man.
Well, first of all, Mayor and Council, I think you all recognize that our staffs are really an extension of our values as well. When you find someone that you share a value with, you give them a prominent role in your decision-making and your outreach, and Martin has been that. And you can see over several administrations, if you will, myself, Greg, and Melissa, all embracing not only having him come to work and do the kinds of things that he did and enjoyed to do, and not only that, but the HOAs, the organizations that we dealt with all the time, the individuals appreciated his sincerity and his commitment to doing what he did for our community. And when you find someone like that, and then you can also make sure that they're your friends, you know, what a living tribute. In a very, very small way, I want to read a proclamation here, you know, kind of recognizing some of Marty's, you know, efforts, and basically, it's a resolution from the state of Texas. Whereas members of the City of San Antonio City Council are gathering on this day to honor the lifelong public official and beloved assistant, I mean, I'm sorry, beloved resident Martin Trevino, who passed away on March the eighth. And whereas for more than a decade, Mr. Trevino served with distinction in the San Antonio City Council District Six office, where he worked tirelessly to improve the lives of those constituents that he had an opportunity to engage with. Prior to joining District Six, Mr. Trevino enjoyed a rewarding career in public transportation, which included 26 years with Via Metropolitan Transit, six years with Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority, and in addition, he previously served his country as a nurse in a burn unit of the U.S. Army Medical Specialist, as a U.S. Army Medical Specialist. And whereas all of the above, Mr. Trevino's treasured time spent with his family and friends, he drew the strength from his soul-filling marriage to his lovely wife, Virginia, and took great pride in their son, Anthony. In his leisure hours, he enjoyed going on cruises and listening to the Tejano music that we all have learned to appreciate here in our city of San Antonio. A devoted family man and dedicated civil servant, Martin Trevino will be deeply missed, but the profound determination, abiding humility, and resounding selflessness with which he lived his life will forever inspire all of us. Be it resolved that this tribute be paid to the memory of Martin Trevino and that sincere condolences be extended to all those who mourn his passing, and there are many. Signed by, under my hand, Ray Lopez, State Representative, District Six, 125. And what's not on here is a friend. He truly was a friend and will be missed, and I just can imagine him sitting up there right now, watching down, enjoying life and having a comment or two. But with that, thank you very much for the opportunity to come in and share a little bit of time with you remembering Marty. And if I may, I'd like to present that to Virginia. And what I also have, and as well, Anthony, where did you get?
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are. There's a copy of that same resolution. And what I also wanted to do is, these resolutions get read into the book and what they call the journal, that actually sit in the House Library that can be retrieved at any time, which anyone that wants to go to Austin can look up different things and remember a little bit about individuals that perhaps have gone, gotten a resolution read, and put into the journal. What we also are in a monitor to be able to do is to present a flag to the family, a flag that actually flew over the Capitol on the day of his passing, and we want that to be a token of our remembrance and a certificate to go with that. So Mayor, thank you very much, Council. Best of luck to you, and thank you for the great work that you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all very much, and to the whole Trevino family, including the District Six community, you have our prayers. All right, well, we're now going to move on to our agenda. We will start with item three, which is the approval of the meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twentieth, 2025. I'll entertain a motion for item three.
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item three. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item four.
Item four, Councilmember White will be sworn in as Mayor Pro Tem for the period of April third, 2025, through May thirty-first, 2025.
All right. Hearing no motions to withdraw, Councilman White, please oppose your pro tem.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. In the name...
In the name...
And by the authority...
And by the authority...
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
I...
I...
State your name...
Mark White.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of...
The duties of...
Mayor Pro Tem...
Mayor Pro Tem.
For the city of San Antonio...
For the city of San Antonio.
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
From April third...
From April third...
Through May thirty-first...
Through May thirty-first.
And will...
And will...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And laws...
And laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. We will move on to our agenda before we get to a few ceremonials. We do have a full consent agenda. All items save for item five are listed for consent consideration. So I'll ask my colleagues now if there are any items to pull for individual consideration.
Twelve and thirteen.
And eleven.
Okay, items eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Item twenty-one. Any others? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. That's all items save for five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Everyone who has signed up to speak is on items that are going to be heard individually, so there are no citizen comments. Is there any council discussion? That's not been pulled. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. On item twenty, we have Charlene Haydiger. Okay. All right, so Ms. Haydiger's seating her time. Any further discussion? Councilmember Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you. I have two items I'd like to highlight today. One is item fourteen. I am so excited to vote to approve item fourteen on a consent today, approving contracts to hire veterinarians for the east and west side spay-neuter hubs. As we're all aware, our city faces a dire safety and humane issue in the number of animals that roam our streets. Spaying and neutering as many animals as we can will help meet our goals to reduce the burden placed on our shelter and rescue organizations. This next critical step to staff vets for these surgeries is huge and one step closer to opening the hubs for full operation. I look forward to the impact this will have on the east and west sides, our neighborhoods, and our city as a whole. I'd also like to highlight item seventeen, designating Bishop Donnie Banks Memorial Way on Montana Street between North New Braunfels Avenue and Walters. Today, Victory Gospel Chapel will celebrate the final official step to designate Montana Street between New Braunfels Avenue and Walter Street for beloved Bishop Donnie Banks. Bishop Banks was a leader on the east side for decades at the Victory Gospel Chapel and the Spiritual Growth Center, and helped countless lives through the battles of drug addiction and alcoholism. He knew that interpersonal relationships and community building are what prevents crime best, and he lived this mission by housing, providing food, clothing, and spiritual mentorship for over 28 years. He passed in 2021 and is deeply missed by all who loved and knew him. Our hope is this memorial designation will serve as a reminder and honor to a very great man and all of his work for the east side and beyond. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Miki Rodriguez. Any Councilmember Villagrán?
Thank you. I just want to highlight item number eight, the ordinance approving contracts with Central Electric Enterprise and Company and Zackman Enterprises, Inc. This is for on-call electrical repairs and services for the San Antonio International Airport and the Stenson Municipal Airport. And we were there last week for recognition of the Tuskegee Airmen Day at Stenson, and just making sure that we are continuing to take care of both of our airports and having these contracts, even though we see him in audit and it's not very exciting. I did want to highlight that today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Villagrán. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to highlight item fifteen and the overall work of our Animal Care Services Department, particularly of John and Brad for their work in ensuring that we continue to scale up our city's spay and neuter services and free vaccine and microchipping services for our pets. This work and these contracts are incredibly important to keep our neighborhoods and our residents safe from loose and roaming stray animals, and that our pets are too kept safe and healthy. Looking forward to seeing the new animal care service on the east and west side, and of course, we're really excited for the Las Palmas location to ensure that west side residents have access to these spay-neuter services. So extremely grateful for Animal Care Service, their leadership, and everyone over at ACS. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Castillo. Any further discussion on items remaining on consent? Okay, hearing none, there's a motion and a second for approval of all items save for five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and twenty-one. Please vote. Motion carries. Okay, we have a few items before we get to item five that are just for procedural purposes being pulled, so let's get to item eleven.
Item number eleven is an ordinance approving the acquisition through negotiation or condemnation of interests in permanent and temporary parcels of land sufficient for project purposes of privately owned real property and declaring the 2022 Bond Program Project, District Nine Traffic and Mobility Improvement Stone Oak Area, to be a public use project and a public necessity for the acquisition of six right-of-way easements and four temporary construction easements for the District Nine Traffic and Mobility Improvement Stone Oak Area Project.
Councilmember Courage.
Thank you, Mayor. As you heard the clerk read off, you know, these are significant areas that we're addressing for traffic in the north side in District Nine. And in order to do that, we sit down and try and negotiate with property owners, but if we aren't able to do that, then we have the authority to use eminent domain. Therefore, I move that the city of San Antonio authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the property for public use project for the District Nine Traffic and Mobility Improvements projects in the Stone Oak Area by acquiring the following property described by the city clerk and incorporated as part of this motion.
The privately owned property consisting of six permanent right-of-way easements and four temporary construction easements for the District Nine Traffic and Mobility Improvement projects located in new city blocks 19219 and 19222. These properties are depicted in the overall project map and more particularly described by the exhibits attached and incorporated as a part of this motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of item eleven as read. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item twelve.
Item number twelve is an ordinance approving the acquisition through negotiation or condemnation of interests in permanent parcels of land sufficient for project purposes of privately owned real property and declaring the 2022 Bond Program Project, Brookside Outfall Esma Roadway Area Phase Two, to be a public use project and a public necessity for the acquisitions of portions of seven private properties, which includes three permanent fee simple parcels and four drainage easements located within the Brookside subdivision in support of the 2022 Bond Project, Brookside Outfall Esma Roadway Area Phase Two.
Councilmember Villagrán.
I move that the city of San Antonio authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire property for the public use project of the Brookside Outfall Esma Roadway Area Phase Two project by acquiring the following property described by the city clerk and incorporated as part of this motion.
The privately owned property interest consisting of three permanent fee simple parcels and four permanent drainage easements located in new city blocks 10833, 10884, 10915, and 10914. These properties are depicted in the overall project map and more particularly described by the exhibits attached and incorporated as a part of this motion.
All right, did I hear a second? All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of item twelve as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item number thirteen is an ordinance approving the acquisition through negotiation or condemnation of interests in permanent and temporary parcels of land sufficient for project purposes of privately owned real property and declaring the following two 2022 bond-funded projects to be public use projects and a public necessity for the acquisitions of A, portions of 16 private property rights-of-way easements located along Watson Road located within County Block 4298 for the Watson Road Phase One Verano Parkway to West Apollo Alto Road Project, and B, one variable width right-of-way easement out of new city block 13975 totaling approximately 2,875 acres, 125,366.54 square feet for the linear greenway trails, specifically the Leon Greenway Connection via Port San Antonio.
Councilmember Villagrán.
Thank you. I move that the city of San Antonio authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire property for the public use project for the Watson Road Phase One project and the linear greenway trails project by acquiring the following property described by the city clerk and incorporated as part of this motion.
All right, there was a motion, is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
A, the privately owned property interest consisting of portions of 14 permanent right-of-way easement interests located along Watson Road located in County Block 4298 for the Watson Road Phase One project, Verano Parkway to West of Palo Alto Road, and B, one variable width right-of-way easement out of NCB 13975 for the Linear Greenway Trails Project, Leon Greenway Connection via Port San Antonio. These properties are depicted in the overall project map and more particularly described by the exhibits attached and incorporated as a part of this motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of item thirteen as read. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Okay, before we get to the rest of our business today, we do annually recognize the great work that our child abuse prevention community does, and one of the most critical organizations in our city that does that work is an organization called ChildSafe, which has been protecting children all over this region for decades, and we are very proud to be supportive of that organization and all of their efforts in this community. And you may have noticed some decorative cardboard behind us today that is meant to draw awareness to child abuse and child abuse prevention in our community. And so to recognize Cardboard Kids Month, I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Aldereta Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. I am proud to introduce ChildSafe in honor of their Cardboard Kids Reveal Day today, April third, 2025. Joining us here today from ChildSafe are President and CEO Randy McGibbinney, did I say that right? Courtney John, Chief Development Officer, and Karen Adams, Public Relations Consultant. Randy, please come to the podium. Every year in April, ChildSafe celebrates their Cardboard Kids Reveal Day. This campaign also coincides with Child Abuse Prevention Month, which begins April first of each year. The Cardboard Kids Campaign is a citywide public awareness initiative aimed at drawing attention to the pervasiveness of child abuse and neglect in our community. San Antonio continues to have the highest rate of confirmed child abuse cases per capita amongst all major Texas... major Texas cities. The goal of Cardboard Kids is to get people talking about child abuse and to highlight the fact that every story is different and every child is unique. Having conversations about abuse is crucial to ensure children and caregivers understand the signs and know when and how to speak up. Over 120,000 Cardboard Kids are distributed each year and displayed around San Antonio starting on Reveal Day. Today, you will begin seeing these all over the city representing the many children in our community who have experienced abuse or neglect. Each of my colleagues has a Cardboard Kid at their seat. I encourage each of you to display these invisible locations to help spark important conversations and raise awareness about child abuse. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and we are all part of that village. It is our jobs to recognize and report child abuse and, and to believe the children in our lives if they share their story with us. Thank you so much to Child Safe for being here, and thank you for the incredible work y'all do in our community. I'll turn it over to you, Randy, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
First off, thank you very much. This is the second year you've had us back to, to speak to the city council. And we, we've been coming up here a number of years now. This is actually our 11th year in launching Cardboard Kids. April is National Child Abuse Awareness Month. And I just want to share a real quick story with you about something I learned about yesterday inside of our organization. At Child Safe, we house a number of multidisciplinary team partners to combat child abuse inside of our community. Our, our goal and our hope is by pulling these partners together to investigate these horrific crimes against children, that not only we can lock up perpetrators of this crime, but that we can then take children from a place of that justice to healing and, and move them along. I was angered yesterday, and I was heartbroken by a story of one of our partners in the building who went to go check on a child at their house. And the perpetrator was there. This individual was not supposed to be there at the time. And he grabbed that, that employee and began punching on that employee, trying to drag that employee into his house and threatened to kill that employee. And it was only because of a concerned citizen that was out blowing leaves that intervened, that that employee's potentially life was saved. I bring this up because it's significant, the work that we do at Child Safe. And while April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, I think we need to also be aware of the people who are on the front lines doing this work, the impact that it has on them, their safety, when all they're trying to do is protect our, our, our children and the future. We are the highest confirmation rate of child abuse in major metropolitan areas. For every 1,000 kids, eight and a half children will be abused, will be confirmed abused in our community. Last, last year, calendar year, the department confirmed over 4,500 confirmations of child abuse. Over the 11-year span of, of Cardboard Kids, we have given out over a million of these, these guys. And this year, we hope the 82,000 that are, that we gave out this year will help continue to raise awareness, not just for the child victims, but for the individuals who are on the front line. And we can't do this work without the support of, of the city council, without the support of our law enforcement, but also without the support of the community of San Antonio. So I can't thank you guys enough for being here, allowing us to, to stand here in front of you and, and share these stories. The, the one story I shared with you is one of a thousand stories that I have to listen to every single day and that the individuals on the front line are fighting to protect these kids go through every single day. So thank you for the time. Councilwoman, I can't thank you enough again for having us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Alderete Gavito, and to the entire Child Safe team. You have our support and thanks for the work that you do daily for the children and families of this community. I know my colleagues also want to say, make a few remarks. So let me start with Councilmember Viagra.
Thank you. Child Safe has had some success in the past here in San Antonio because I went to, well, we're, we're trying to eliminate sexual assault against children. And you all told the story about how you had to educate a whole population that it was not right, incest was not right, that uncles and fathers and grandfathers could not use the women in their families and abuse them as their sexual playthings. And y'all did an education piece, and you educated them, and we've seen those numbers go down. But as we have ancestry DNA, we see nationally and locally that this was a problem. And so I know that you can be successful in curbing some of this. But I really do feel like we're having to start all over again right now with our youth, with our women, with our children, period, where people think that they own them, that they can use them how they want. So thank you for the Cardboard Kids. Thank you for your continuing, continually working and saying the hard things. And that's why I didn't want you to come up here today and not tell that story. Because sexual abuse against children is still prevalent, and it's not strangers. And we still need to educate. Because while we worked on one generation, we have another generation coming up where they don't seem to get the message, where they think it's okay and it's not okay. So thank you for being here today. Thank you for my Cardboard Kid. I really appreciate it. But every time I have, I get a Cardboard Kid, that's the story I remember, that they were successful, but it doesn't stop. We have, we are, we have to continue educating the, the public. So thank you so much for being here. I look forward to supporting y'all in the future. I think you're doing a great job. I know it's a, it's a hard job, and I know the first-line workers get burnt out. But I want you to know that you're saving lives and you are, you are moving a whole group, a whole generation forward when they can find healing through what you do in your services. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viagra. Thank you all very much for what you do. And, and again, you have our support and our gratitude every day.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys.
All right, we are now going to get into the rest of our agenda. We have a couple items to get through. We'll start with item five.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing an expedited procurement for the reproductive justice healthcare to support downstream reproductive and sexual healthcare services, which may include out-of-state travel.
All right, we have several citizens signed up to speak on item five. I'll take folks in order of sign up. I'll just let you know, individuals will have three minutes to speak. You may either use your time or cede your sign, your time to someone else who is present, not both. Groups can have up to nine minutes. The playing of recordings is not permitted. And I'll also just remind folks, please be respectful of the person who is speaking at the podium. Keep your reaction to a minimum. If I have to remind folks about this, we're going to recess and, and it's going to take a while to get through it. So again, if everyone can be respectful of the speaker at the podium, we'll get through this in short order. So we'll start with Marcus Dovellina. Mr. Dovellina, you'll be followed by Dr. Tim Wesley.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Marcus Dovellina, and I'm a constituent of D1. I'm not here today to speak to those committed to cutting vital services, those who vote to defund Medicaid, school lunches, SNAP, and dismantle healthcare and childcare assistance, nor those who vote against addressing the number one cause of childhood deaths, or the people who go to Austin to legislate pregnancy. I'm here to speak directly to those who call themselves pro-choice, who say they stand with women in marginalized communities. As a former Marine, it was instilled in me to serve something bigger than yourself. Stand up and fight for those who can't fight for themselves. That's what courage looks like. That's what leadership looks like. So I ask you, will you serve the disingenuous, dishonest, equity starts in the womb but ends after it people, the people who won't be voting for you regardless of your decision? Or will you have the courage to serve the people whose rights are under daily assault because the people will remember where you stood? Will you serve the loudest voices or the most vulnerable ones? One particular comment compelled me to come today, a remark about not putting taxpayers on the hook for this fund. As a taxpayer, I request to be on the hook for this fund. The community requests to be on the hook for it. That excuse is weak. Let's not pretend $100,000 breaks the budget. You're not going to think twice about putting taxpayers on the hook for a $2 billion stadium. You won't blink at tearing down housing to build a minor league baseball field. But this fund, this is where you choose to draw the line? And this vote is not about 100,000. It's about sending a message that when a fascist movement launches an all-out attack on human rights, San Antonio stands with its people, with the vulnerable, and with the future. Have the courage to do what's right. Pass the additional funding. Stop legislating pregnancy. Expand access. Expand care. And above all, represent the people who elected you. Stand with your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dovellina. Dr. Tim Wesley. Dr. Wesley be followed by Laura Molinad.
Good morning. I find it mighty cynical and hypocritical that on a day you all are recognizing the children, April been a month that's recognized as Child Abuse Recognition Month, and you're, you put your cutouts there, which is a great effort, and I commend that effort. And you want to protect children. Yet and still, you decide that this is also a great month to go ahead and vote to spend $100,000 of taxpayer money to circumvent the system and Texas laws to fund abortion. Maybe you all don't realize it, but since we've been in this meeting alone, since you started this meeting, there have been almost 100 children aborted since we started this meeting. By the end of the day, we're talking 2,400 per day. That's 100 per hour. And you all think that it's proper to go ahead and fund this? Maybe you don't realize that San Antonio is made up of both Protestants and Catholics to the tune of about 1 million people. So that's about 1 million of your constituents that you're simply saying, we're not going to concern ourselves about your faith, about what you represent. You're simply saying that the defining characteristics of this community doesn't matter. The defining characteristics of who you represent doesn't matter. You're simply saying we're going to do as we choose. But I want to let you all know that at this point in time, it's mighty cynical, as I've said before, mighty hypocritical. April been a month that you're talking about protecting children, protecting children. God intended for the womb to be a place of protection. But you all, every single one of you, you're choosing to turn the womb into a tune on my tax dollars and with my tax dollars. I'll close with this. If this measure is not voted down before I'm elected mayor of this great city, I can assure you, it's better days that's behind it. Smile if you like. As the next mayor, I will fight to ensure that not one dime, not one dime of our hard-earned tax dollars will be spent to circumvent Texas law or enable the destruction of unborn lives. We had one quote that I wanted to share with you coming from the Pope himself, Pope Francis. He said, "The right to life is the first among human rights. To abort a child is to kill someone who cannot defend himself." Dr. Tim Wesley will defend the children and put you all on notice today. We won't have it. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Laura Molinad. Ms. Molinad, you'll be followed by Ariana Rodriguez.
Hello. Good morning, councilmembers. Mayor Nurnberg, thank you all for, for listening to us this morning. My name is Laura Molinad, and I am here today to respectfully urge you all to support the $100,000 expansion of the San Antonio Reproductive Justice Fund. I recognize there is anti-abortion legislation currently being proposed at the state level. But we must not allow fear or intimidation to guide our actions. These bills are not the law. San Antonio has a small, yet vital, opportunity to act strategically and compassionately by using our local resources to ensure community members can access abortion care safely and swiftly. For undocumented people, increased threats of detention, deportation, and criminalization have left people terrified to seek prenatal care and reproductive healthcare services like abortion care. My organization, Sueños Infronteras, is uniquely positioned to provide the logistical and compassionate support needed for undocumented San Antonians to travel out of state for care, ensuring they can safely navigate these processes without added fear, stigma, or isolation. There are members on this council who have said that they have a responsibility to steward taxpayer dollars, not towards reproductive justice funding, but to core services such as emergency response and infrastructure. I'd like to assert that investing in reproductive justice will only complement and enhance these services. Proactive investment in reproductive health helps prevent future burdens on an already strained emergency medical system and social services by reducing unintended pregnancies, reducing intimate partner violence, and maternal and infant health complications. Access to comprehensive reproductive healthcare is essential, not only to individual health outcomes, but to the broader public health, safety, and prosperity of our city. Council members, today, today you all have the opportunity to be on the right side of history. Our community deserves leaders who stand firm, who choose justice over fear and compassion over these political threats. By voting yes on this expansion, the City of San Antonio will clearly demonstrate that people's reproductive freedom is non-negotiable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molinad. Ms. Ariana Rodriguez, you'll be followed by Kate Sanchez. But before Ms. Rodriguez speaks, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Brean.
Just a reminder to the speakers that since we are in election season, it's very appropriate for individuals to come up and talk about the substance of the, the substance of the item before the council, but inappropriate to turn it into a speech advocating for their candidacy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. All right, Ms. Ariana Rodriguez, you'll be followed by Kate Sanchez.
Good morning, council. I'm Ariana, the Youth Advocacy and Community Engagement Manager at Jane's Due Process. We help young people access the care they want and need, whether it's accessing STI testing, needing a support system when they feel overwhelmed, or traveling out of state to get abortion care. We here for Texas teens. In partnership with the University of California and the University of Colorado, we found that support organizations like abortion funds and practical support funds were transformative in ensuring access to care. A client described that after paying all her bills, she only had $100 left. So it was a relief when funds covered her cost and allowed her to get the abortion care that she wanted. Young people have always faced additional burdens and challenges when seeking abortion care, and traveling out of state has only amplified those obstacles. By providing financial assistance, guidance, and support, abortion funds remove the stress and help young people obtain the care they need. I hope everyone will take a minute to look at the altar set up outside that honors and remembers the people who have died when they were unable to get abortion care in Texas. They were mothers and sisters. They had wanted pregnancies and were robbed of long, beautiful lives because of our state's harmful policies. When I was putting those images together, I thought one day it could be my best friend, me, or someone in this room added to that memorial. The city has a window of opportunity to utilize local resources to support abortion access and reproductive freedom for San Antonioans. The city should not let fear of legal attacks stop them from making this investment. Texans are suffering, traveling far distances, going into debt, and going to unimaginable lengths to access care. The city cannot allow fear to dictate its decisions when so much is at stake and people are dying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Kate Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez, you'll be followed by Cynthia Lugo.
Is it still morning? Barely. Morning, y'all. My name is Kate Sanchez. I live in District Two, and I am here on behalf of Planned Parenthood South Texas as the senior manager of organizing and advocacy, advocating for $100,000 to be added to the Reproductive Justice Fund with emphasis on abortion travel. And a big thank you to all of the city council people that have championed this, this, this far, truly making history in San Antonio. So currently, there are multiple abortion-related bills in front of Texas lawmakers that not only seek to punish the abortion provider and the abortion fund, but they seek to punish the abortion seeker. And that means that they're seeking to punish patients. If these bills pass, it will be one of the first of its kind in the nation to punish abortion seekers directly. And then we'll see this manufactured healthcare crisis continue to exacerbate negative outcomes for pregnant Texans. So abortion bans, as we know, eliminate safe So abortion bans, as we know, eliminate safe and legal access. They have never eliminated the need for abortion. And an example of this is our one patient navigator for our seven clinics in South Texas received nearly twelve hundred calls last year pertaining to abortion alone. Planned Parenthood, abortion funds, nonprofits alike, we're seeing decreases in funding because of this current administration. We do not have the capacity or the monetary resources to keep up with the demand. Currently, our organization definitely understands why abortion can make some people uncomfortable. The reality is, it's complex, it's personal to each individual, it is healthcare, it is safe, and the harsher reality is that the landscape of abortion in Texas is dangerous and lethal in cases that we've seen. Personally, intimate partner violence makes me uncomfortable, and San Antonio sees very, very high rates, some of the highest in the state. And studies show that abortion bans keep people trapped in this cycle of violence. Maternal death makes me uncomfortable, and Texas claims one of the highest rates in the country right now because of abortion bans. And our city also continues to see higher teen birth rates and poverty rates than the state's average, and studies show that having access to abortion can help break these cycles of poverty and teen pregnancy. So while abortion can make some people uncomfortable, it can save lives and livelihoods. And at the end of the day, this hundred thousand is less than half of a percent of the general fund, and it will save lives in our city. And it shows San Antonians that our elected officials are willing to step in during unprecedented times and take care of our people, keep our people safe, and ensure access to the healthcare and the information that they need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Cynthia Lugo. Cynthia Lugo. Yaneth Flores. Ms. Flores, you be followed by Erica Galindo.
Good morning. My name is Yaneth, and I'm here in support of allocating an additional hundred thousand dollars to the Reproductive Justice Fund for logistical abortion needs. I am grateful that we continue to build towards a city where constituents feel taken care of and supported. In a time where extremist policy has made pregnancy the most dangerous it has ever been in Texas, it is necessary to support organizations that still provide a lifeline to abortion care for San Antonio. Due to the confusing and aggressive abortion laws in our state, sepsis rates have gone up more than fifty percent, and the rate of maternal deaths has increased to fifty-six percent. That is a forty-four percent increase compared to the nationwide average of eleven percent. I would be remiss if I didn't note that while we delayed downstream investments like abortion funding, more reports came out of Texans who lost their lives due to the abortion ban in our state. These are the rare stories of people who made it into the media, who had national attention. May they rest in peace. The state and the city owed them better. In light of these preventable tragedies, I pray that every Texas city would find the courage to meet the moment and support the provision of abortion education and resources like logistical abortion funding. Pregnant Texans deserve direct service and access to care without facing additional barriers, stigma, and shame. Right now, if you're not familiar, San Antonians only have two options. One, you seek abortion out of state, which comes with many barriers. Or two, you risk your life waiting for doctors and lawyers to reach a consensus on whether you are dead enough to get emergency care under the current definition of medical emergency. This is not only cruel, it is also unsustainable. Bad faith actors are making decisions for Texans. They block Texans from dignity and care in an attempt to control our bodies and empower abusers to use reproductive coercion against their partners. But there are leaders like you who know that we cannot afford to leave power on the table unclaimed, leaders that will fight for us. I want to thank Council Members Castillo, Villagrand, Caballo Habera, Cor, and Maki Rodriguez for their leadership with regard to this issue. We see you, and we are grateful that you show up and advocate for a better future in San Antonio. I just can't emphasize enough the positive outcomes when people are able to access timely reproductive healthcare, especially abortion care. When people are denied abortion, this results in economic insecurity for women and their families, and an almost fourfold increase in odds that household income will fall below the federal poverty line. Investing in reproductive justice and the Reproductive Justice Fund is a commitment to care, dignity, and trust against extremist attempts to control our health, and I know that San Antonio will side on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Erica Galindo. Ms. Galindo, you be followed by Rolando Pablos.
Hello, and thank you, city council members and the mayor, for meeting about this important matter to include life-saving abortion logistical support as part of the Historic Reproductive Justice Fund. My name is Erica Galindo, and I'm here on behalf of myself and as the Organizing Program Manager of Lilith Fund, an abortion fund that serves people in central and south Texas by paying for their abortion care in other states where abortion is legal, supporting Texans traveling back to our state after their care, and providing emotional support for people who have had abortions. Including abortion logistical support would go a long way in securing the futures of the people of San Antonio. Recently, I learned that being and staying pregnant is the most dangerous time for pregnant people, and it's not just because pregnancy can be dangerous in states with abortion bans like Texas. As we know and can see with the people we're honoring outside on our altar, that's because homicide is a leading cause of death in pregnancy, meaning that if someone is unable to access an abortion, they're being forced to stay in danger by supporters of abortion bans and city leaders that refuse to do anything about them. Refusing to support abortion logistical support in the Repro Justice Fund endangers the people of D2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, where IPV rates are especially high. I want to thank my city councilwoman from District Five, Teri Castillo, for recognizing the critical moment we're in and stepping in on her power to make the reproductive journey for all of our constituents possible by supporting the fund. This is especially appreciated as we know other city council members from District 10 are going to our state's Capitol to conspire with anti-abortion senators on bills like SB 33 that concede power local governments have, power that also belongs to the people of the city to have a say in how their local tax dollars are spent. So given that people are literally dying when they don't get care, and now lawmakers are trying to make it harder for us to meet and address these needs, the time is now to do something about it. So I'll say it again, not just because we, and so many of us know how abortion bans put every pregnant Texan in danger, and because we know that this time that we're in to exert our power as a city is limited, but I'm asking you all to vote for point zero one four percent, that's less than half of one percent of our city's 2024 fiscal year budget, and invest in the complete reproductive health for everyone in our community. I'm asking all of you to be creative and steadfast in your power and commitment to the futures of all of us, and vote for the expansion of this fund to support abortion logistical support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galindo. Rolando Pablos. Mr. Pablos, you be followed by Mohamed Rasool.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Mr. Segovia, I am a candidate for mayor, and I'm not here as part of my campaign, so I just want to make sure we put that on the record. Mr. Mayor, I submitted a letter to each one of you, and I'd like for it to be entered into the record. If you don't have it, I have a copy of it here. I'm here to speak in opposition of this item, and let me tell you why. From a fiscal responsibility perspective, I think that there are other priorities that we need to be looking at. You all ask us every year, every other year, through a budget survey, to tell you what we believe is important to our city. And I think we've spoken and said that issues like public safety are important, infrastructure important, homelessness important. I haven't seen this on the budget survey, and it troubles me because this is a highly divisive issue. If our goal and objective is to bring this community together, to work in harmony and unity, this does the exact opposite. And look, if people believe that this is an important service that needs to be provided, there are many nonprofit organizations that can do that. I urge you to then go to the private sector and ask for private monies for these types of issues. But when you ask the entirety of the taxpayer base to fund something that they are completely opposed to doing, then that creates a divisiveness that is going to erode the public trust in this city government, and I believe that that is unacceptable. So I ask you to use fiscal prudence as you vote for this item today, and I ask you to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pablos. Mohamed Rasool. Mr. Rasool, you be followed by Alyssa Shepherd.
All right. Good morning, council. I'm here also to speak in support, oh, I'm not running for mayor, by the way, so just I'm here to speak in support of these funds. I've heard a lot of agreement or disagreements about why to be against it, and they fall into two buckets, basically. There's fear, and there's ethics. The fear component comes in where we're scared of being sued by a state that's instating arbitrary laws that are causing deaths in our community. Being fearful of those folks is a shame, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves if that's your argument. Ethics, there's the argument that we just heard that not every resident in San Antonio agrees with this expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars. I challenge any of you council members to show me one single vote where every one of the taxpayers agreed with your vote here on the dais. It's an absurd request, and it's an absurd argument coming from you all as to why to not support this. The good news is that there's examples on the dais today of folks that did the right thing to protect young women's lives. Council Member Mark White recently had a situation where he was notified that a young woman was in danger, or he believed she was in danger. And instead of allowing the impression of being unethical or overstepping legal lines, he jumped into action and, in his own words, used everything within his power to go and protect that young lady's life because it was worth it. I saw him stand for two hours in front of an ethics review board and over and over and over again argue in favor of the fact that he was seeking the moral path forward. He was doing what was right in his conscience to protect a resident of this community from danger or death. So I urge all of you to use his actions, not his words today, but his actions when posed with the situation, as inspiration for how to vote today. Sitting up here, reading words that likely were generated by ChatGPT to this community is the easiest part of your job, but taking action that is going to bring criticism, it's going to bring difficulty into your lives, and it's going to bring a little bit of hardship to your reelection campaigns, that's the courage we demand of our city council. And that's what we need, that's what we need in our new mayor, Mr. Pablos, and that's what we need from all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rasool. Alyssa Shepherd. Alyssa Shepherd. Dominique Huerta. Ms. Huerta, you be followed by Mike Knufke.
My name is Dominique Huerta. I reside in District Four. I work with the ASLU of Texas, and most importantly, I'm a new mom. Today, I'm here in support of the Reproductive Justice Fund in requesting an additional one hundred thousand dollars to support San Antonians' access to out-of-state logistical abortion support. When the city of San Antonio allocated a very small portion of the 2024 fiscal year budget to create the Reproductive Justice Fund, our community had the opportunity to establish positive change amongst bad and frankly deadly state policy. The Reproductive Justice Fund is a beacon of love and what San Antonians and truly what Texans believe in. This is an investment in the community. Texans are suffering and dying, and the city has the opportunity to utilize local resources to support San Antonians in accessing the support they need. Reproductive justice is a fundamental right. Reproductive justice is about ensuring that every individual has the necessary resources to support their and their family's future. Right now, Texas is one of the deadliest states to be pregnant in. Let's give the people of San Antonio their dignity back by funding out-of-state logistical abortion support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Huerta, Mike Knufke. Mr. Knufke, you be followed by Robert Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, or good morning. My name is Mike Knufke with the San Antonio Family Association. I'd like to address the absurd Reproductive Justice Fund that we're opposed to, or I'm opposed to. Let's talk about Reproductive Justice Fund. Let's start with the reproductive part. Oh, there's nothing reproduced here. Why do we call it what it is? The Killing Justice Fund. What you did for Martin was very nice this morning, and was right and fitting to do. The only difference between Martin, God rest his soul, and his family and these people is you're snuffing out their lives, and you don't know their name, you have no relationship with them. And I can't help to hear the disconnect between some of the speakers talking about abortion care. Well, abortion's killing, and in Texas, killing is murder. So you, if you look at it correctly, it's murder care. Just think about that. We're going to save lives to murder care. How absurd. How absurd is that? Murder care. What do we do when a city goes rogue or is corrupt? Well, we're doing it right now. We're speaking here, we're trying to do other things. We have a lawsuit against the city of San Antonio. I understand, I've already spent four hundred thousand dollars on this reproductive justice fund, and we have some other tools in the bag, but what we need is we need you to act like a body that thinks about domestic prosperity and future. We're not going to go anywhere without having children. We're talking about childcare earlier. That's very good. What about baby care? Can we expand that to baby care perhaps? This is absolutely absurd, and we have a moral and religious objection to this as a taxpayer in San Antonio. And children are being enslaved, and moms are being enslaved, children are being killed. Our Lord most likely is going to ask all of us, what did you do to stop it? Be courageous, have holy courage and stop this. This is insane, to kill seventy thirty percent. Seventy percent of San Antonio is pro-life Christians. Even the numbers, Mayor, seventy thirty. I mean, this is wrong. You could just double down. I'm not listening to them, I'm going to do it anyway? We've got to stop this. This is a family city. This is a courageous city. This is a city of faith. To unbelievers, I would say this: Vote today, otherwise you will burst asunder.
Thank you, Mr. Knufke. Robert Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez, you be followed by Patrick Von Doleman.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Name's Robert Gonzalez. Life, born and raised in San Antonio, born in Santa Rosa Hospital, just a few blocks from here. I'm a resident of District Seven. I wouldn't speak against this proposed funding. It's horrible. Reading the text, there's references, terms, downstreaming, I read that, justice, just over a week ago, just over a week ago, want to talk about downstreaming. We had someone who was homeless in this city. She was on the streets, people knew her, they, she had a nickname, Ms. D. She disappeared. We've had these spring storms coming through, nobody knew where she was. Well, guess what? On March twenty-fifth, a jogger was going down over by Woodlawn Park, Woodlawn Lake, and we saw a body in there. This woman had been living in the storm drains. And so I wonder, you know, is this care? We're talking about downstreaming? This woman was downstreamed right into Woodlawn Lake, right in District Seven. I can't believe it. I mean, do we really care about our community? Where are we allocating our funds? What's going on? Why are there people in the storm drains? I don't understand this at all. I don't understand the lack of compassion. We're a community, and this is a spectrum. We should care for people. This happened, her body was found on March twenty-fifth. Christians recognize that as the day of conception, that's nine months prior to December twenty-fifth. And it's... the day of conception. That's nine months prior to December 25th. And it's, it's ironic. Beside myself, when I think about this tragedy, I think about this poor woman's last seconds of life as she was drowning. There was no one there to help her. The city failed her. There's many women out here that have problem pregnancies. They don't need to be encouraged to kill their babies. Their babies also are human lives, but they're euphemisms used to degrade life. This is not new. Life unworthy of life, term used in Nuremberg. And we don't want this, this fund to be a legacy of the Nuremberg Council. I respectfully ask that this funding be voted against and that we find we better allocate these resources.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Patrick Von Dolen? Patrick Von Dolen? Mr. Von Dolen, you'll be followed by Paul Como.
Good morning or good afternoon now. I know that y'all got to go celebrate the NCAA Final Four this morning, and what a great treat that is for San Antonio to, to have the NCAA Final Four here. But isn't it hypocritical that we go celebrate the achievement of basketball teams, young men who most likely fit the demographics that you're now targeting with this mandated taxpayer-funded abortion travel? The very young men on those, on the basketball court in the Almodome are the same ones you're targeting here, demographically. And it's a travesty and hypocritical. It's hypocrisy at its finest, whether it be the projected name-calling we were subjected to by Manny Palayas in November 21st, whether it be the planning to celebrate our diverse living culture during Fiesta while planning to harm women with criminal organizations like Jane's Due Process and Planned Parenthood, Planned Death Hood, whether it be a violation of the Open Meetings Act of the Community Health Committee's meeting on February 28th by posting that, that agenda the day of the meeting, it will be, it will be ruled null and void, hence this one too. Whether it be the city attorney legally clarifying to a mayoral candidate that he can't speak about his candidacy, but he hasn't yet clarified for y'all, you're about to break Texas law. Whether it be about spaying and neutering dogs, you're going to treat them like animals, women like animals? The hypocrisy of it. Whether it be your hypocrisy about protecting children from abuse, from getting rid of DNA evidence, that's important. You're about to get rid of DNA evidence of children. They just happen to be preborn. That's the same DNA evidence that right over here, this city councilman wanted to make sure we didn't get rid of. You're about to get rid of it through abortion travel funding. Whether it be about protecting slaves, you're treating these women like they're being trafficked, treating their children like they're slaves, like you own them with our taxpayer dollars. We haven't voted on this. This is outside of the city charter. You have no business participating in this. Mayor, did you not say on November 21st, we'll find another way? This is, leads to today on abortion travel. This is your legacy. Will you be about making San Antonio like Boston or like the city of St. Anthony, a, a city of life that celebrates Fiesta, that celebrates culture, that celebrates women and protects them? How dare you? How dare each of you, for the comments you've made, for the actions you've done to supposedly protect women and then kill children?
Thank you, Mr. Von Dolen. Paul Como? Mr. Como, you'll be followed by Betty Eckert.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is not about courage. Like a previous speaker indicated, there's courage on all sides, just like terrorists who hit, flew into the World Trade Center, probably were exercising courage as well. It's just, it's a matter of conscience, not courage, conscience. We need to straighten up. We, I was raised, I, I didn't know about such a thing called the double standard until I get around college age. But I was six of 13 kids. We were brought up, men were brought up to respect women, to, to treat them with sex, marriage would be for life. Sex came, pregnancy came with sex, if you, you know, in the normal course of thing. That's the way God made us. I'm not apologizing to the women here that I'm a man. I do have a say. We all had mothers and fathers. We, we need to get back to the whole deal about sex education, abortion as a right. The choice, the legitimate choice, the legitimate right, has to do with having sex to begin with, especially sex that would lead to pregnancy. That's where the choice is made, not afterwards. That's after the fact, when the new life is coming, you take the risk, and if people are ignorant, it's on you to see that people are educated, as opposed to supporting these funds that are trying to send women to kill their children. They need to teach the men that they should not ever get these ladies pregnant to begin with, and that they are responsible if they do. Apart from that, teach women about their bodies instead of mutilating their bodies and their babies, loading themselves up with chemical, chemical contraceptives and pills and abortions and stuff. Things like the Natural Womanhood Organization will teach women how to learn about their cycles, learn about whether to avoid pregnancy or to achieve pregnancy, either one, but also teach them about their health. They can often, by learning their techniques, get an advanced look at, at health issues that, that may be problematic that otherwise wouldn't be caught until too late. And, and, and between that and adoption and pregnancy care centers are all around, where is city money going for that? Where is the education going for these things? Where is the real choice women are even being presented, other than you can screw around with anybody and we'll take care of that by killing your baby?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Betty Eckert? Ms. Eckert, you'll be followed by Brielle Ensler.
Thank you, and good evening, City Council and to our mayor. I can't believe that I'm standing here today and addressing this issue. I've been blessed to be, to live 94 years, and I'm still thinking clearly about the issue. Why in the world is a city involved in something they shouldn't be involved in? It is now time to make a change. We're going to get a new mayor. Hopefully, we're going to get a new city council. If we don't, I hope that we change the way we do things in San Antonio. I hope a law is changed because the representative sitting on this council is not representing the people. Where has the meetings been? A couple of weeks ago, we had a case down here where we had no public meeting. Where were the public meetings? Where were you? Did you go out there and tell the people, no, you sacked the deck today, and you brought people in here to speak for it? How ridiculous. I wonder how dumb did you think the people are of San Antonio? Continue what you're doing. It's going to be stopped. I will guarantee you. And I will work for that last minute of my life to see that it is. You're not representing San Antonio, none of you. Shame on you. Shame on each city council person. Did you go out? Did you hold a meeting? Did you meet with people? Did you tell them what you're getting ready to do today? No. Did you call these nonprofits in to speak down here today? Yes, you did. It's so obvious. You want to sack the group. You did. You brought people in to talk about abortion. Do you care anything about the seniors in San Antonio and Bear County? Do you know that we're number three in food insecurity? Have you cared? Have you done anything? Have you had any meetings about that? So you're killing, you're going to kill babies. Guess what? You're doing the same thing to the 240,000 seniors in San Antonio and Bear County. Are you people awake? What in the world are you doing? All the education you have? Goodness gracious. I cannot hardly believe. You went to school and college and you're sitting up here and doing this?
Thank you, Ms. Eckert.
And you know it's wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Eckert.
Thank you so much.
Brielle Ensler? Ms. Ensler, you'll be followed by Ruby Jimenez.
Hello, thank you. I'm probably going to get emotional because we're here talking about human lives and human rights. Today, we honored the life of a true public servant, Martin, someone I was lucky to know. Outside this morning, we honored and pray for the lives of real Texans residents who were taken from us because harmful legislators playing doctor and playing politics with our lives. I've been in San Antonio for 14 years. As a tiny business owner, we focus on and work with a lot of nonprofits. I have two young children. I'm a mother. They were born and raised here, and my, their grandparents moved here too. And I've spent time getting to know this community and doing what I can to serve as best I can. I volunteer on boards, including the Mayor's Commission on Status of Women, Community Health Nonprofit, and I've served as vice chair of the Bear County Child Welfare Board for five years. And as a mom, I know how important access to care is. I planned my first child. I planned parenthood. And now I'm watching the rights I had as a teen growing up no longer available to my daughter, and I'm watching actual humans die from bad, ugly politics. I know how important it is to have advocates at a local level in a state that doesn't care if we live or die. I know that being pro-life should mean you want to protect the lives of living, breathing humans, and it should mean that putting even half as much energy into showing up for abused and neglected children as you do to control these people's bodies. Being pro-life should mean you support doctors and their medical expertise to save lives, not the rhetoric of unqualified politicians. And abortion is not always about a choice, but it should be. As we speak, state legislators continue to push harmful bills, and today, we're at council to testify for our lives and request that our local government step up to invest $100,000 to support abortion travel. This is wildly supported by the public, 85% of Texans. This is a public health crisis. It is a drop in the bucket versus the millions our city invests in healthcare and nonprofit support with our public dollars. This is essential while state and federal governments overreach not only our local governments, but our bodies, our medical decisions, and our lives. This is a public safety and a domestic violence issue. We know that domestic violence shelters in Texas have seen a surge of pregnant women since these laws have been in place. We, we fund those. Local leader and advocate Martha Palias, CEO of Family Violence Prevention Services, was quoted saying, "Looking for help going out of the city, leaving the state to have an abortion is completely impossible." This is an issue that disproportionately affects marginalized and vulnerable communities, those experiencing poverty, and people of color. This is the job of our cities to step up where there are gaps of support. And this is not time to cower from legal threats from overreaching oligarchs. We pay our city attorney to defend us, and we have seen these funds successfully pass two rounds in Austin. I want to thank you all today for getting this here, and I want to thank you all for standing up and supporting our lives as he passes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ensler. Ruby Jimenez? Ms. Jimenez, you'll be followed by Laura Rios Ramirez.
Hi, good morning. I'm here to implore you to protect the women and people who can get pregnant in San Antonio by allocating the $100,000 to expand the Reproductive Justice Fund. Can I talk? As we sit here today, legislation that further restricts access to women's healthcare is being considered. Texas is leading the nation in poor outcomes for the abortion ban. We are living in a manufactured public health crisis and should be treating it with the urgency it requires. I am shocked to see slogans of equity begins at birth when it so clearly ends there at birth. A study led by Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health researchers estimates that infant deaths in Texas increased in the year following the state's 2021 ban on abortion in early pregnancy, especially among infants with congenital anomalies. Another study found the rate of maternal deaths in Texas increased 56% from 2019 to 2022, compared with just 11 nationwide during the same period. Politicians are playing a game with women's lives. Josely Barnica, 28, and Avea Crane, 18, died of sepsis after doctors delayed evacuating their uteruses. Doing so would have been considered an abortion and illegal under the current state law. When abortion was legal in Texas, the rate of sepsis for women hospitalized during second trimester pregnancies loss was relatively steady. San Antonians deserve nonjudgmental, equitable access to critical reproductive healthcare services and support. I'm not just here to plead my humanity to you all. I'm reminding you that you have the opportunity to be brave and courageous in the face of oppression. Some of your seats may be up for, for election on May 3rd. We don't want elected officials who bend the knee to oppressors. We want people who stand up for their constituents and forge pathways when it seems there may be none. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Laura Ramirez, followed by Susan Barnes. Laura Ramirez? Nope. Okay. Susan Barnes? Hold on, hold on. Please, please come to the mic. We have Susan Barnes and then Jessica Solis.
I don't have a whole lot to say because I can already see, as I've been sitting here, Jalen has District Two, which people are starving in. We got a church over there, Jalen, that's begging for children for you to also adopt beside the one you already have. Terry, I got something to say for you because you know what, over in Five, Raymond Zavala, every time we go to something, you guys bully us, and we're tired of it. So I'm going to ask you once again, Mark, to listen to my friend Betty because she's hungry. We voted on this already. We talked about it already. Why are you wasting our time with more money? For what? Answer the question. We have laws. That lady knows it. She just said it. It's against the law. She knows it. You know it. That should be the end of story. Instead, you guys... Terry, stop snickering. I'm tired of you guys bullying me every time. It's uncomfortable to come and speak my mind when I get ganged up on. Stop it. Now, that's all I have to say, Mark, because I saw you the other night, and you ignored Betty, and that's why I'm here. So I'm going to tell you, you two, stop ganging up on us. You know me, so stop it. So I'm sitting down, and that's the end of my time. I'm asking nicely to work with the city. You do not represent us.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Jessica Solis, followed by Raymond Zavala?
You're welcome, baby. Anytime. Anytime. I'm sorry I had to do it for you. Stop laughing.
Thank you so much. I'm here to speak in favor of the Reproductive Justice Act because women are dying from lack of necessary healthcare. Abortion is healthcare. You know, we're in a state where, you know, we have the highest rates of death due to not having access to abortion. And, you know, in, you know, when, this fund is an act of righteousness and justice in a climate where the state and the nation are oppressing people. It's not true that laws are, you know, the just thing in the world, because we've seen historically the laws can be unjust. Laws can be oppressive. It is an act of courage for this council to do the right thing and support women's access to healthcare and to take a stand against the injustice that, you know, is being seen across Texas and across the country. You are standing with women. You are standing with the majority of your constituents, you know, all across Texas. You are standing with the majority of your constituents, you know, all across Texas. You know, it's 80% of people support abortion access, unlike what other people are saying. There's multiple studies that show this. Yeah, and working-class women cannot always come to these meetings, but you see them out on the streets. You know, International Women's Day is one of our largest marches that's outside of the cities for them to do. We need this fund to help women everywhere and to help women in San Antonio be able to access healthcare and to live better lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Raymond Zavala. Mr. Zavala, you'll be followed by Grant Moody.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. There comes a time in our lives when we must make a choice, a life with honor and a life without. I oppose the spending of our tax dollars to fund travel and expenses for people that have abortions. Murder is murder. Any decent person would not act like an animal and kill another person. This is on you. I want it to stop. Wasteful money distribution. Yes, I've heard the argument, my body, my choice. Well, really? If that's the case, then you should save up your money in case you have an accident and get pregnant and want to have an abortion, you pay for it, not the citizens of San Antonio. We are tired of getting stiffed with unprecedented expenses. I lost a child. Well, my wife and I both lost a child at birth. Until this very day, until the day I die, I think about him, what he would have been like, what he would have done to become successful. I've adopted two young individuals. Both of them are very successful. Why? Because I showed them love and care, and that's what we need to do. We need to adopt, not abort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zavala. Grant Moody. Mr. Moody, you'll be followed by Jack Finger.
Wow, this podium's a little low here, huh? Mayor and members of City Council, I'm here to voice my strong opposition and many of my constituents' strong opposition to this proposal that would use taxpayer dollars to fund abortion-related travel. I'm pro-life, but regardless of where someone stands on this issue, using public funds in this manner is a gross misuse of taxpayer dollars, an attempt to circumvent state law, and an unnecessary move that further divides our city. At a time when San Antonio faces pressing challenges, public safety concerns, infrastructure needs, and economic uncertainty, our focus should be on core city responsibilities, not on funding politically charged initiatives. The people of San Antonio expect their tax dollars to be spent responsibly, not on ideologically-driven policies that do not reflect the priorities of this city. San Antonio is a vibrant and diverse city, home to people with a wide range of beliefs and values. Using public funds to facilitate abortion, a deeply contentious issue, only serves to create further divisions at a time when unity is needed the most. Our citizens expect their leaders to focus on common ground solutions that improve quality of life, not to push partisan agendas that alienate a significant portion of our community. Furthermore, this proposal is a clear attempt to undermine Texas law. The state has made its position clear on abortion, and for the City Council to seek ways to work around these laws not only disrespects the democratic process, but also invites unnecessary legal battles that will ultimately be funded by our taxpayers. Rather than pursuing policies that openly defy state law, the City Council should be working collaboratively with state and local leaders to address the real concerns facing our community. City resources should be directed toward initiatives that strengthen our economy, improve public safety, and enhance city services, not toward efforts that facilitate abortion and contravene state law. I respectfully urge you all to reject this proposal and instead prioritize policies that respect life and unite our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Jack Finger. Mr. Finger, you'll be followed by Angela Ortiz.
Well, Mayor Ron Norenberg and other members of our illustrious San Antonio City Council, for the record, my name is Jack M. Finger, and I'm very impressed with the Metropolitan Health District and Department there and their public relations people. You know, I have to find out who they are so that I can use them for anybody else's campaign. They know how to use euphemisms so well. Let's look at this, Mr. Audiovisual Man. What does exactly does this ordinance say here? Kind of blow it up, that underlined area there? Yeah, what's it say? Ordinance authorizing an expedited procurement for reproductive healthcare. Healthcare and... If I can just read it, excuse me. And support downstream reproductive and sexual healthcare services, which may include out-of-state travel. Okay, return the camera if you would. What is this reproductive healthcare mean? Is it help for people with problem pregnancies? No. It's about, Jack, it's about abortion. It's about baby-killing, you ninni. Oh, okay. Well, is it about out-of-state travel? Is that about tourism? Tourism travel? No. It's about trafficking them to states where it is legal, Jack. Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah, like as in prostitution to travel out-of-state. Okay. I'd like to know, what companies are doing this? Who are we contracting with? I mean, I've looked at the backup documents here, and I don't see them here. But, Mr., return... Yeah, see the same page, those yellow, those various yellow... See in Items 3 and 4 and 5 and 6, you have yellow outlined companies which we're contracted to do contracts with there. Return the camera here to this podium. But on here in the backup documents, no companies. Why? Why are we hiding those companies' names? Well, it's simple, Jack. Today, we're not deciding on the companies. We're simply deciding to asking the City Council to expedite the process. That's all. We haven't gotten that far. Oh, okay. So in other words, you are trying to... Council's trying to rush rushing the baby-killing decision. Yeah, hurry up, City Council. We need to get through this. So the question is, why? Why are we going so fast on this? It wouldn't be because you're trying to beat the Texas Legislature to close your loophole on this, would it? Huh? I mean, inquiring minds would like to know there. I also noticed that the...
Thank you, Mr. Finger.
So many scandals, so little time.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Angela Ortiz. I am a community member in District 6, and I come to you today as I want to express my support for the Reproductive Justice Fund. It is a fundamental human right. It's about ensuring that every individual, regardless of background, has the autonomy and resources to make informed decisions about their reproductive health and future. Now, since the Supreme Court's historic 1973 decision in Roe versus Wade, the issue of women's rights to an abortion has fostered one of the most contentious moral and political debates in America, as we have heard multiple people and their opinions on the subject. Abortion rights advocates in contrast maintain that women have a right to decide what happens to their bodies. So what's interesting is hearing people speak about the misuse of funds, ironically, when in fact, this fund would support women's reproductive rights. Now, what people are not focusing on is that people are not just women going to get abortions for the sake of killing babies. What many of these people are missing is that often, there are wanted pregnancies, and there are complications, as has been indicated by two women here in Texas who have recently lost their lives as a result of sepsis, as a result of doctors fearing losing their license, being put in jail because they need to make sure that the baby is dead before they can go in and do the proper medical care for a woman. As a woman, as a mother with a daughter, I want to make sure that women in our community have the right to fair access to women's reproductive healthcare. Now, as far as the religious beliefs for abortion or against abortion, or if you are pro-choice, we have to put that aside, and we have to recognize that ultimately, as a community, we need to support women. We need to support also infants, who there has been an increased infant mortality rate since they have rejected the Roe versus Wade, and now Texas standing strongly against abortion, which is why women have to go outside the state to seek healthcare for whatever their reasons. But I am here today to make sure that the City Council, as a community member, that you understand that that is what I want to see done with my taxes. I want to make sure that women have fair and equal access to reproductive healthcare. And I think also it's important to highlight the hypocrisy of the idea of misusing funds. For another day, I'll touch on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. All right. That is everyone who signed up to speak on Item 5. Thank you all for being respectful. We got through that without any delay, so let me now go to council discussion, but before we do that, I'll entertain a motion on Item 5.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval, Item 5. We will begin our council discussion. Councilmember Cabeo Havada.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for everyone that came to speak today. The fight for reproductive healthcare is a fight for women's lives. Y'all can talk all the political rhetoric you want about public safety, fiscal responsibility, fear of lawsuits. I got one job up here, and it's to protect the people that I represent. This job, this fund does just that. It's real. It's urgent. Families in our city are being forced into impossible situations, and the state has failed to prioritize their needs. This fund is how San Antonio is stepping up when other entities will not. We're making a commitment to protect and support the reproductive health of our community. Hell, just the health of our community. And one of the ways we're doing that is through the Reproductive Justice Fund. Reproductive justice isn't a policy term. It's about dignity, autonomy, and ensuring that every person, no matter their background, can make an informed decision about their own health. That's where we're dedicating a fraction, but a meaningful portion of our city's budget, just .014%, to invest in the well-being of our residents. When we talk about healthcare, we're talking about real people, real families, and real lives on the line. You can talk all you want about irresponsible young people, but it's about so much more than that. It's about, as Ms. Ortiz said, planned pregnancies, women miscarrying, and not be able to expel the fetus, and their lives being in danger. I haven't heard any of you say anything about that that are against it. We're watching the consequences of the state abortion bans unfold in real time, and what we're seeing is a public health crisis. Texas leads the nation in poor maternal health outcomes with a 58% increase in infant mortality from 2019 to 2022. That number represents mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends who should still be here. I don't see what is so unnecessary about defending our community in the courts. Some of y'all said we shouldn't mandate masks because we're going to get sued. You know, what ended up happening? We all, all of us talk about wasting tax dollars, but in lawsuits, those of you talking about the lawsuits are the ones suing us. So your hypocrisy is duly noted. Josely Barnica, a 28-year-old woman, died after being denied care following stillbirth. Her death was preventable. Nevea Crane, just 18 years old, who suffered a miscarriage but was turned away from care because of the state's restrictive laws, she didn't survive. And Portia Nuzeemi, a 35-year-old from Houston, who lost her life after being denied a standard medical procedure for a high-risk pregnancy. These tragedies are not isolated. They're the direct result of policies that put politics over healthcare. And now we're seeing the unthinkable, the criminalization of miscarriage. Patients who experience the trauma of pregnancy loss are being interrogated, treated with suspicion, and in some cases, denied care altogether. We cannot and will not stand by while this happens. Texans are already traveling hundreds of miles, taking on debt, facing impossible choices just to get basic care, and we can act before more lives are lost. We also have to acknowledge the broader impact of these policies. Healthcare providers are afraid to offer even routine care, like DNCs, because of confusing and punitive laws. Let's talk about the financial burden. Studies show that denying someone an abortion significantly increases the likelihood of poverty, long-term debt, and economic stability. Guess what we see in our budget surveys every year? People talk about lowering poverty, economic stability, and public safety. Protecting our community is public safety. In a city where the poverty rate is already higher than the state average, these policies are only making it harder for people to build stable futures. Some might ask, is this really the city's responsibility? And some of you have said that today. The answer is real simple. Yeah, it sure is. Local government exists to protect the health and safety of its residents. If no one else are going to care about the people we represent, it's our job to step up and do it. I hope no one up here says it's not their job to protect the women in our community. This council, the folks sitting in front of you right now, voted to allocate millions in public health for mental health services, for vaccinations, for nursing for our community. If we can allocate budget dollars towards that, we can allocate budget dollars towards women's healthcare. One is not more important than any other. My job as a representative of this community is to protect the people of this city. That includes making sure no one dies because they were denied healthcare. We owe it to Josely. We owe it to Nevea. We know it to Portia and every woman out there. We will not be intimidated. We will not be silenced, and we will not allow fear to dictate whether people in San Antonio can access the care that they deserve. I stand proudly in support of this fund because protecting reproductive justice is protecting San Antonioan lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabeo Havada. Councilmember Courage. All right. Thank you very much, folks, but if you could please keep your reaction to a minimum so folks can hear when their name is called, Councilmember Courage.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, why are we using this time and our resources today to debate abortion? You know, that's what we're doing. Why? It's because two or three liberal-minded council members want the city to go on record to support abortion, and all of the rest of the council has been brought into it. I agree that pregnancy is a woman's health issue, and I believe every woman has a right to choose what to do with her body. But this issue is a divisive issue, and it doesn't unite us. And we need to create more confidence and trust in our city government, and through divisive issues, we don't do that. You know, some people here today have said, keep the government out of my bedroom. Yet, what we're doing today is having the government intervene in this exact process. You know, we need to really consider what is the scope and the obligation of city government. I don't believe that this is within the realm or the scope of city government. I do not agree with the laws that have passed in this state, but I also don't think that we should be taking on the obligation of helping people travel out of state to have an abortion. Let me ask this for a food for thought. Is this a one-time activity we're going to take to make a statement? You know, $100,000 could help 200 women at 500... You know, $100,000 could help 200 women at $500 each get out of state, get an abortion, pay for the hotel, the travel, whatever. But what happens four months from now or five months from now when there are hundreds of other women facing the same thing? Are we going to allocate another $100,000? Or are we gonna add a half a million dollars to our next budget? Is this going to be an ongoing commitment by this city to go ahead and pay for any woman's travel out of the city who wants it? And I don't think that is within the scope of the city of San Antonio's responsibilities as a government. So I wouldn't be supporting this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage. Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cabal Harvard, can I just have your notes so I can reread them? I think Councilmember Cabal Harvard said it, said it perfectly.
All right, Ms., folks, I'm gonna have to recess us and then we're gonna be here all day long before we get to action. If I can ask everyone to please respect the person speaking, we'll get through this. So please, no reaction to comments that are made, whether you agree or disagree. Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I was saying, I want to commend Councilmember Cabal Harvard's leadership on this issue. I think this was a really important area that was missed in our first round of Reproductive Justice Fund. And I want to commend Councilmember Castillo on her leadership for getting us to this area, this spot where we are, where we do have a Reproductive Justice Fund in our city's budget. And to answer Councilmember Courage's question, I do believe this needs to be a budget item for each and every single one of our budget years to support comprehensive women's rights. So the data, the points have been made, but I just want to emphasize some data that I was looking at. There was 26 people that spoke today, 11 in opposition, and 81% of those people were men. I am tired of, I'm tired of men being able to, in our community, in our city, and in our state and country, decide what is right for women's rights and what women can choose to...
All right, Ms. Eckert, we love you, but we need your respect up here for the speakers. Again, I'm gonna remind everyone, we are all gonna be here all day long. We'll take as long as it takes. Please respect the folks who are here, and right now we're in council discussion. It's the last warning. Next time, I'm recessing us, and I can't tell you when we're gonna be back. Councilmember Core.
In effect, 56% of maternal mortality rates have increased in Texas since the ban took place. And that rate is significantly higher for black women and women of color. So in effect, what we are doing by not supporting this today is saying modern-day redlining is okay, that health care for certain populations is allowed because they have the individual ability to afford whatever it is that they need to travel out of state to get the care, and that the low-income communities who can't have that will go into sepsis, will face mortality, and have no other option. And I just can't stand, stand to the side and watch that happen for our community members, for the women that I represent in District 1. And I'm honored to be a part of a council today that will hopefully pass this, to be able to support women's rights for all of the women that live in our city and not just the few wealthy ones. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. Councilmember Aldeyra Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pro-choice, and I believe that women should have access to reproductive health care, including abortion. That being said, my personal beliefs should not supersede my duty to represent my constituents. We are all elected to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. At its core, the job of municipal government is to provide basic services that keep the city functioning. These include things like infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, stoplights, fire, police, animal care services. I would argue that access to out-of-state travel for an abortion does not fall under the city's duties to its residents. San Antonio is facing a budget deficit over the next several years. Diverting this money away from current programs would be irresponsible. And it would be reckless to provide travel for abortions knowing full and well it will open up the city to litigation. It's not gonna be if, but when the state decides to sue us for enacting this ordinance. And it will cost the city of San Antonio hundreds and thousands of taxpayer, of your taxpayer dollars in litigation. So no, this is not just $100,000 allocation. The consequences would be a whole lot more on us. There are nonprofits in the community that do a great job of providing abortion access services. I have every bit of faith in their ability to fundraise to provide these services, and I put my money where my mouth is. You know, I have, I have donated to these nonprofits who are doing the great work for women's rights. There are plenty of ways that we all, as a community, can support women's access to abortion, but I don't believe the use of these taxpayer dollars is one way to do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aldeyra Gavito. Any further discussion on item five? Councilmember Palais.
Thank you to everybody who showed up today, and this item will certainly pass, but it's not gonna pass with my vote. And I know that reasonable people, friends of mine, are going to disagree with the way I vote today. And that's the nature of deliberative government. Sometimes we disagree. And I think today's vote will certainly be celebrated as a victory some, but by some, but the way I see it is, I see it as a pyrrhic victory, right? In that the victory comes at a much greater cost than what we're celebrating, right? And where's Kate Sanchez? I saw her up here. Are you still here, Kate? Hey, thanks for coming up here and speaking. I think your comments were important, and the organization that you represent, Planned Parenthood, and the work your team does is invaluable. And you inspired me while I was listening to some of these other people speaking to make a contribution of my own money to your organization. Please, please keep up the good work in DC and in Austin and pressuring folks. And Kate, I agree with you, and I agree with Planned Parenthood. Abortion is health care. And I agree with you that the Texas legislature is putting women at risk of death. I don't think that's hyperbole. I think that protecting women from being prosecuted and threatened to be thrown in jail for seeking that health care is the right thing to do. And I think those prosecutions and those threats are monstrous. And I think that the current state of affairs in Austin is wholly unsustainable, and it needs to change. And with the kind of pressure that you, Kate, and your, and your team are placing on, up there, I think eventually we will change it. And I think that that's where the fight needs to happen. Where you and I don't agree, Kate, is when you ended your comments by saying that the $100,000 will save lives. I disagree, and I disagree respectfully, because not a single penny of this $100,000 will be spent. The reason I say that the vote is pyrrhic is because what we're doing today, and Andy's gonna be frustrated that I say this, but what we're doing today, for $100,000, we're buying a lawsuit, and we're buying an injunction that will be granted by some judge out there. And the cost of that lawsuit will eclipse the $100,000 by many orders of magnitude. And we're gonna lose that lawsuit. I'm heartbroken to say that, but we're gonna lose it. And you know who's celebrating today? The litigators that Andy's gonna have to hire and that the state will hire, who are gonna be paid many hundreds of thousands of dollars before we get to a motion for summary judgment hearing. And I don't think that's a good waste. I don't think that's a good way to spend our money. I think that's a good way for us to, to light $100,000 on fire. And no, I'm not afraid of getting sued. I'm a litigator. Sue me. I sue people and I get sued all the time. That's the business that I chose, right? It's not fear, it's absolute certainty. I'm certain of what I just said. And I'm certain that today's vote will amount to us not just losing $100,000 and lighting it on fire, but us then trying to put out that fire with more money and that money being burnt too. And so I'm also gonna remind everybody that we're monitoring a Senate bill, Senate Bill 730, which would prohibit cities from, from doing exactly what we're doing today. I think that bill is awful, but it'll pass, and it'll be the reason that we lose the lawsuit. I'm also certain that right now, upstairs, on floors number three and four of City Hall, there are press releases that have already been drafted that will be published within five minutes of today's vote, all of them boasting and using words like courage and boldness and leadership. And I just don't think that spending other people's money, knowing that it is going to never be spent on what we promise it'll be spent on, but instead it'll be spent on Andy's lawyers and Ken Paxton's lawyers, I don't think that's leadership. It's something, but it's not leadership. And I don't think that spending $100,000 so that we can have press releases and victory laps, congratulating ourselves for our boldness and our courage, is a good use of public funds. And I'm certain that there's a better way to spend all the money we'll spend on lawyers to help people that won't get a suit. So no, I'm not afraid of the lawsuit. I'm just certain that we're gonna lose it and that that money will be lost to be able to help people like ChildSafe and that team of saints that work out there. So I'm also gonna use the last few minutes of my time. Last week, I took a break, a three-day break from campaigning, but also from the work we do here at City Hall. I represent a family, and I spent my time with them to go to court and obtain a protective order because they're being terrorized. A young woman and her elderly parents are being terrorized by a member of their family. And we spent multiple days working with her, and I even spent a lot of time with her and the family out at their home to secure this, this little tiny house on the east side from this guy continuing to terrorize them. And I was at their home when he showed up, and we called SAPD, and thank God they showed up on time. He had a gun on him. And everybody to this moment is still terrorized. Thankfully, he's in jail right now. We had him arrested. Next week, I'll be in court again, helping this young woman and her parents to make sure that they don't continue to live in a state of terror. And I appreciate everybody using the domestic violence argument to weave into this, this conversation about abortion. You're 100% right. You can draw a straight line from domestic violence and female health care. But, you know, some people are also, and we already heard it, that this is some sort of vote that'll reflect, that reflects sort of a binary choice between either support of women and their health care. And if you vote no, then you don't support women or their health care. And that's a false choice. It's a little dishonest, too. And so to those people that are gonna tsk, tsk my no vote and try to characterize it as a failure to support women, spare me the, spare me the lectures. I don't need to spend other people's money to support women. I don't need to do press releases. I don't need to break my arm off to pat myself on the back over and over again. I do that with my own time, I do that with my own money, and I do it in a way that actually impacts people's lives. And this $100,000 is going to impact nobody. It'll never get spent. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Palais. Andy, do you want to address the legal issue?
Well, Mayor, I mean, obviously, we give legal advice in executive sessions, but I can't say that we have prevailed in District Court in the initial stages of this litigation. And I can't say that certainly my office doesn't revel in spending attorney's fees, but if we are sued, our job is to defend what the city's doing. That's what we're doing. The law here is very fluid. We will continue to monitor it and provide the appropriate legal advice to council as things change. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Councilmember White.
Councilman Palais was very diplomatic in those comments, and I'm probably gonna be, gonna be less diplomatic. We are, we are heading down a dark, dark road here as a city. We are not Portland, we are not San Francisco, we are not Austin. We are San Antonio. And in my view, we are much, much bigger and better than what this council looks like they are poised to do today. But my message to begin with is it's not too late, and we can still turn back right now. Now, let's be really clear, and for my friends in the media back there, we gotta be clear that we framed this issue today properly, okay? Because we've had a lot of talk about abortion, and everybody on this dais has their own views on abortion. But today is not about our personal beliefs on abortion. Today is about the proper role of city government and what we should be doing with our citizens' tax dollars. Eric has already told us, because we're planning for the budget coming up, money is going to be extremely tight this year. We have so many issues that we have to take care of as a city. Public safety, infrastructure, the homeless issue, housing. Why today are we thinking about spending some of these precious dollars, our citizens' hard-earned money, on sending women out of state to receive abortions? Councilwoman Core brought up some statistics earlier, and I want to bring up some statistics now. Probably the number-one call that we all get in each of our offices deals with our streets and our sidewalks and our drainage issues. Let's look at the numbers as a city. Councilwoman Core, in your district, 30% of the roads are in poor or failing condition. Councilman McKee Rodriguez, in your district, 28%. In District 3, 27% of the roads in poor or failing condition. District 4, 24% of the roads in poor or failing condition. Councilwoman Castillo, in your district, it's 26%. In District 6, it's 13%. In District 7, 21% of the roads in poor or failing condition. In District 8, it's 10%. In District 9, it's 9%. And in my district, it's 23%. Mayor, in this city, 22% of the roads, almost a quarter, are in poor or failing condition. And let's talk about crime, right? The number-one duty of this city council is to keep our citizens safe. Recently, we got some crime statistics by district for 2024. Councilwoman Core, in your district, 4,460 crimes last year against a person, over 19,000 crimes against people's property. Councilman McKee Rodriguez, in your district, 4,572 crimes against people, 11,234 crimes against our citizens' property in District 2. In District 3, over 3,800 crimes against people, over 10,000 crimes against property. In District 4, 3,000, well, 2,999 crimes against people, 9,616 crimes against property. In District 5, over 4,000 crimes against people, over 9,000 crimes against your citizens' property. In Council District 6, over 2,600 crimes against people, over 10,800 crimes against citizens' property in District 6. In District 7, over 2,500 crimes against people, 8,500 crimes against property. In District 8, 2,500 crimes against people, over 13,000 crimes against our citizens' property. In District 9, over 1,800 crimes against people, over 8,600 crimes against people's property. And in District 10, over 2,100 crimes against people and over 7,700 crimes against people's And yet, rather than spend $100,000 protecting our citizens, protecting our property, fixing our citizens' streets, we're here today to spend money to send women out of state to receive abortion services. It's not right. It is a betrayal of our taxpayers. It is an improper use of their money. It is not what they put our city government here to do. We talked about the law earlier. I think this violates the law as we sit here right now, and it most certainly, it most certainly is... it most certainly is going to violate the law that-- or the pending law in the Senate authored by Senator Donna Campbell that is almost certain to pass, which strictly and explicitly prohibits cities from using their taxpayer money for logistics related to abortion services. We've talked about, well, it's not just $100,000. And that's right. Last year, we spent over $6 million in taxpayer money defending ourselves against lawsuits. More money's gonna be spent on this. Abortion is probably the most divisive issue in the country. But again, this today should not be about abortion. I've received calls from elected Democrats, from former elected Democrats right here in San Antonio, who have said to me, "Mark, you and I don't agree on the issue of abortion, but I'm 100% with you on this issue of using taxpayer dollars to fund abortion in other states." Mayor, every single time that we have been up here talking about this issue, every single one, you always say, "Well, I'm just gonna follow the women. I'm just gonna leave it to the women. I'm gonna follow the women." You can't do that today. Because there are pro-choice men and women on this side of the issue. Today, the politics have to be set aside. Today, we've got to stand together and say, we may have differing opinions on that issue. But on the issue of how we spend our taxpayer money, we have to stand together and say that as a city government, we're gonna focus on city issues, and we are gonna do right by the San Antonio taxpayer. And to my colleagues, I'll leave you with this. And I'm clearly-- I'm amped up about this issue because it's bigger than just this $100,000. It's about this city. It's about this great city of San Antonio that we have the privilege of leading. And the most important thing that we do every year is determine how we're gonna spend our citizens' money. And my vow to you today is this. We have worked really well together over the past two years. And regardless of how this vote turns out today, I promise you that as long as I'm sitting in this seat, I will continue to work with each one of you on your priorities, on the city's priorities, and I'll do everything we can to make this city better. But today, I'm asking you, before we hit the yay or nay button here in a few minutes, to reconsider your position if you're thinking about voting for this. I believe that every person up here knows that this isn't right. This is not the role of city government. This is not what our taxpayers want from us. It is not too late to turn back from this dark, dark road that we appear headed down. Let's stand together today. Let's do what's right, and let's vote this down. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Andy, you want to address the legal issue?
Yes, again, thank you, Mayor. Once again, let me reiterate again, given my role, the role of the city attorney's office, there is nothing before counsel today that violates local, state, or federal law. I just wanted to make that very clear. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Councilmember Viagra.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I get all the taxpayers in the room to raise your hand? Thank you. So equal amount of people, taxpayers, on both sides. I'm sure Councilman Cor will come and give the stats again on the taxpayers. Let me go over some of my credentials, because I know we've had the attorneys say, "I'm an attorney." So let me give you my credentials. Went to school, learned history, focused on women's history. And before, everyone's like, "Oh, some liberal college." No, Texas Tech University over in Lubbock. Got a master's in bicultural studies. I'm a woman. Have sat on that chair for my annual exam for way too many years because I'm middle-aged. Had the cysts, had the concerns, had the second exams. Sat in the hospital for two weeks because I have cancer, for them trying to figure out if it was cervical, ovarian, uterine, vaginal cancer, vulvar cancer. Ended up being neuroendocrine tumors. But my reproductive organs were there and just ready to take that cancer. So I come today to you to tell you that when we talk about this, we're talking about women's health. And part of women's health is their reproductive organs. And we have not been listened to. We have not been respected. We have not been prioritized by the medical community or this nation regarding our health. So when Roe v. Wade was pulled back, Councilwoman Castillo said she had a plan. And I-- because I was speechless. I was numb. I was immobilized. And she worked, and she came with a plan. And she said, "This is what we can do." And we went a first round, and we got funds. Not a lot, but we got some. And if we look at what Houston's paying and what Dallas is paying, and Claude will have those stats, it is not anything near that San Antonio taxpayers want to see help because we are women in this city that vote. And what we need is support and help because we have historically been treated like second-class citizens or men's property. And so what we're coming here today is asking the city council to do what, for generations, this city council did not do, and show women the respect that they deserve and give them the help that they need in this specific field, which is our health. Because for too many years, our insurance, our healthcare was tied to our husbands or our fathers. And so all we're asking is for your help on this. We have put that if you come with a proposal for out-of-state travel, we want to look at that. But if they come with proposals for no travel, we still need money and help. We still need that $100,000 for downstream issues. I am not on the ground working like the advocates that came and talked today. So I don't know what they're gonna put forward with all the rhetoric they hear. But whatever you put forward, we need more dollars. I am a sitting city councilwoman that did the appointments and still did not get listened to by her physicians and doctors. How are we supposed to expect that somebody with a language barrier or not as much education is getting listened to and heard by her doctors? So all we're asking is for more funds to go towards the reproductive justice fund so that we can have the groups that are on the ground have the resources to address these issues. Out-of-state travel may be in it, it may not. We don't know yet. But these what-ifs that we're talking about, this rhetoric of, "This is me not supporting women," well, then what is it if that's not what it is? We-- you want to take women-- you can-- we are here. You can try as hard as you can to take us backwards. You can sit and pray to whoever God you pray to and ask Him that you wish Councilwoman Castillo and Viagra and Cor weren't here. But we're here, and we're using our voices. And the fact of the matter is, we do not have what we need to take care of ourselves as women with our women's health issues. Our reproductive organs are tied to our health. All we're asking is for $100,000 to see what we can do to help women live. And it is life or death. And I don't even know what to say to some of the words that I've heard coming out of my council colleagues right now. I don't understand that. And do not use the excuse that I have women-- I have a wife and a daughter and this like this. Like, historically, we were treated as property, couldn't get our own credit cards. We go to doctors, and they tell us, "Lose some weight, you'll feel better." So please, whatever you vote, you vote. But don't be condescending about it. So I will be supporting this today, whichever way it goes. Mayor Nuremberg, I expect for you to understand where your colleagues are coming from. And whatever happens today, I'm here to talk another day because women's health, health of my people on the south side, is my priority, and this only helps them. So thank you for your time. Thank you for those who came out and really spoke some truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viagra. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. In July, my husband and I will be welcoming a baby into our family. And so the idea of reproductive justice has been quite salient in my mind for a number of reasons. And at the foundation of every step is the right access and the right to choose for all parties involved. That's where my morals and my conscience continue to guide me. In just the past few years, we've given tens of millions of dollars to the most powerful and influential people in the city and have cleared the way for hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars to fund the business endeavors of some of the wealthiest among us. The gravity of the taxpayer dollar is a little bit lighter when it vaguely references economic development. Yet the taxpayer dollar is at its heaviest when we're talking about the needs of our most vulnerable constituents. And a request came to us for a $500,000 fund to support those whose lives are at risk because their access to safe, legal abortion has been stripped away. There are people who have died without access to safe abortion. There are people who have wanted nothing more than to have a baby, a baby they've imagined a life with, grown attached to, and even named. They do not get an abortion because it's a fun thing to do. It's a necessary life-saving procedure, and you are not pro-life when you ignore the life of the person carrying that pregnancy. So when our constituents come to us with problems that are not being solved at other levels of government, whether it's education, it's immigration, mental health, domestic violence, these are issues that have historically not been viewed as local issues. But because there is a need at the local level, we must fill it, or it will lead to disastrous outcomes for our city. That is a belief I hold that is consistent, and I will apologize a grand total of zero times for it. I do want to take some time to say to my colleagues, beyond this fund, there are ways that we can demonstrate our commitment to reproductive justice. That includes becoming a workplace that makes comprehensive, affirming reproductive healthcare benefits a priority, fertility and family-building benefits, stronger paid parental leave and pregnancy accommodations, lactation support and childcare assistance, support for surrogates and gestational carriers, miscarried stillbirth and abortion leave, paid leave and support for survivors of domestic violence, trans-inclusive reproductive health benefits, all of those. In addition to my vote of support today, I'd like to request a comprehensive review of our practices and policies as the city of San Antonio so that we may lead on the issue of reproductive justice holistically. I'd also like to illustrate that while we're having this conversation, every district is on track to achieve an 80% pavement condition index score within 4% to 5% of one another by the year 2032. That is because of a change to the funding formula that we approved in 2022 that has been in place since. While we are having these conversations, there are meal distributions happening to seniors and families in need. There are organizations that are cultivating gardens with city support, and they're doing that right now. And staff is preparing a presentation for a grocery incubator program, CCR, which will be heard at governance in just a few weeks. While we are having this conversation, two spay-neuter hubs are preparing to open on the west and east side of town, and we've approved some contracts today for that. While we're having this conversation, the Office of Integrated Community Safety, an office that I fought years for, is working across city departments to address the root causes of crime in many of the areas of our town that experience the most violent crime. While we're having this conversation, affordable housing is in production across the city, including the expansion of permanent supportive housing. And our street outreach team is working with the very people that you would have swept away as all of their belongings are thrown in the trash, would have them criminalized for putting their only belongings in a shopping cart, and are spending thousands of dollars putting up signs reminding people they don't have to give a dollar to a hungry person on the street. I was elected by my constituents to address some of the biggest, most complex issues in the city and to address them all simultaneously. So today, I am voting yes, and it will be one of many things that I and hopefully you all do today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important that we ground ourselves and that this conversation is around debate of $100,000 in looking at the scope of the metro health budget-- rather, this is budget dust. And when I hear the argument that this isn't fiscally responsible to invest in San Antonio's healthcare access, I think of the hypocrisy in terms of-- the majority of the folks that are being very vocal in terms of fiscal responsibility and the role of local government are typically the ones that sell the farm in terms of large projects, tax abatements, tack increment refinance zones. And if we didn't have those systems in place, diverting funding from the general fund, we could make a greater impact into the reproductive justice health fund, public infrastructure, public safety, so on and so forth. So I ask for consistency in terms of being a fiscally responsible steward of public dollars. The San Antonio Express News recently reported that it's going to cost up to $100 million to relocate a SARS water plant, all to facilitate Project Marvel. That water plant is something that isn't in need of replacement, isn't in need of relocation. But this is something that typically those that are being most vocal about fiscal responsibility are very supportive of. So let's be consistent and sure that we are being responsible when it comes to these larger investments in terms of hundreds of millions of dollars and not $100,000. The question was proposed, right? Is this something that we will be funding in the future? And I'm a strong advocate that we should continue to invest in the reproductive justice fund moving forward with upcoming budgets. Oftentimes, we're having this debate, right? And I think the ones saying we're making a debate are the ones making a debate. But I think it's important to highlight in terms of the responsibilities of city council members, Article One, Section Three, Paragraph 12 members, Article I, Section 3, Paragraph 12 of the city charter also states that the city may appropriate its funds in the exercise of governmental function for the assistance of needy persons to provide for them the basic necessities of life in accordance with categories such as a person's as may be defined by ordinance. So emphasizing that investing in basic necessities of life, and this is what we're having a conversation about, ensuring that women have access to healthcare, which does include abortion and abortion travel. Further, the council, several years ago, we approved a resolution in 2022 to support the individual's right to healthcare access, which states, "People have a basic human right to medical services and treatment up to and including abortion, and the nearest care someone in Bear County could travel for an abortion would be effectively inaccessible to someone who is low income and/or has no reliable means of transportation." So this is consistent with city policy, it's consistent with the SA Forward Plan, and I think it's important that we ground ourselves that this debate that's taking place today is about $100,000. And while I wish it was in the millions in terms of supporting San Antonio women and their access to healthcare, I believe it's lazy, lackluster, superficial to make the argument that this isn't a wise investment of San Antonio's taxpayer dollars. So with that, I'm eager to support it. I would hope that it would be more investment into this initiative. It's very much needed and I think it's very important to emphasize that there is nothing illegal about the action that we're taking today. And I did have one last question for Andy. It was stated earlier that this fund would not have an impact because likely we would be sued and this $100,000 would then be redirected towards legal fees. If that were the case, would this $100,000 earmarked for the reproductive justice fund be rediverted to support legal fees?
No, Councilwoman, we have a separate, there's a separate economy managed with finance that handles legal fees.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Andy, because I want to emphasize that this $100,000 will indeed have impact and not be redirected for legal fees. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Courage.
Yes, I just have a question for the city manager. City manager, where would this extra $100,000 be from?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. So we are looking at, as we go through this process, we will reallocate some non-personnel funds in the Health Department for this contract.
So we're going to reuse some money that's already in the health budget for this?
We're going to reallocate existing dollars, yes, sir.
Well, I hope that doesn't mean that somebody else is not going to get some healthcare because we're reallocating that money for this purpose.
Those dollars preliminarily are focused on administrative and non-service-related expenses.
Okay, but administrators do jobs.
Well, it's non-personnel. We're not talking about anybody's job. We've identified several funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also with Councilwoman Castillo, confused by some of the conversation that's being happened today because we've never led with policy that in fear of being sued. Yesterday, we were sued by the Conservation Society for tearing down ITC. We were sued, when I was first elected in 2023, for the Bracken Ridge Park trees and we still moved forward with that vote. We're sued constantly for officers having fatalities and we still continue to grow the police department. And so we've never led our city department or our city policy based on lawsuits. So I'm confused about why that's being used as an argument for why we wouldn't support this today. I do understand it's election season. We are all undergoing that. So if you are making a political decision, make that political decision and say, I will not support this because it is a political decision I'm making. Don't try to hide behind the fact that we're being sued. In addition, 30% of my streets are failing, Mark. Councilmember White, I completely agree with you. And if you could get me to a solution where we could fix all 30% of those streets in this one year, I would go fundraise. I would donate out of my campaign budget this $100,000. But unfortunately, that solution doesn't exist. $100,000 will get you maybe a quarter of a block of a sidewalk fill. Trust me, I know how much construction costs now. And so a quarter of a block of a sidewalk fill, or maybe we could save 100 lives. I don't know. What's your choice? Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Any further? Councilmember White.
$100,000 gets you another police officer and police officers save lives and police officers deter crime, too. Jeff, if I could ask Jeff Coyle to come up for a second and talk about quickly Senate Bill 33, Donna Campbell's bill. And let me just read to you the language from this bill that is about to almost certainly become law. And it says that "A governmental entity may not enter into a taxpayer resource transaction or appropriate or spend money to provide any person logistical support for the express purpose of assisting a woman with procuring an abortion or the services of an abortion Jeff, Senate Bill 33 is in committee right now, right?
Yes, sir. It was heard in Senate State Affairs a little over a week ago, last week.
And in terms of its likelihood of passage, this has been designated by the Lieutenant Governor now as one of his top 40 priority bills, has it not?
That's correct. It was originally Senate Bill 730 and then it was folded into Senate Bill 33, which are one of the, the Lieutenant Governor designates the first 40 bill numbers as priority bills for him.
Yeah, and this is a bill that's overwhelmingly supported by the Republicans in the Texas Legislature.
It hasn't been heard in the House, so I don't know where it sits there. In the Senate, it has 18 co-authors, including Senator Campbell. So 18 of the 31 senators are signed on to.
Thank you. This bill is going to be law. As you heard the language of the bill, it is clear as day that it is going to prohibit spending tax money like we're proposing today on such activities like this. And so if we do, we will be, we will be in a lawsuit. And listen, you know, we can say all day, we don't worry about what lawsuits happen. Well, we should worry about what lawsuits happen because the dollars that go to defending those suits are coming straight out of our citizens' pockets. $6 million last year defending ourselves in lawsuits. And again, some of them we cannot control, right? We do, as Councilwoman Cor stated, we do get sued for a variety of things and many of which are frivolous. But here, we are inviting a suit that we are going to be on the wrong end of and we're going to be spending more taxpayer money. If this city is going to go where we all want it to, we've got to spend our resources in a better manner. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Villagrand.
Thank you, Jeff. Can you come up, please? Is there anything right now that you can definitively say is going to become law?
No.
Okay.
No, there's a lot that happens in the legislative process, so I make great efforts to not predict whether something will pass or not.
So we can't say definitively that this is going to pass and this is going to become law? And we don't know what the law is going to look like, correct?
We don't know. Session ends roughly end of May, so there's a two months left.
And we could get called a special session.
Absolutely.
And the Lieutenant Governor has 40 priorities. Did he list them, one through 40?
Basically, he reserves the first, oh, you're saying are they in rank order?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I don't know.
Yeah.
Typically reserves 40 spots and issues that he deems as priorities for him or the Senate is where they'll file those bills.
Because, and I'm sorry, Andy, I'm getting off topic because I'd like to know if, you know, what those other 39 are. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that nothing is certain at the state ledge when someone says this is going to be law. We really just don't know if it's going to be law enough. The other is that when we talk about crimes against, which might, thank you, Jeff. When we talk about crimes against and we heard those stats, I'd like to know what are the crimes against women? Because that would be interesting information when we start throwing out crimes. And the other one, oh, let's find out how many crimes of those are committed by men against women. Let's do that, too. But when we have a poverty rate of 20% here in the City of San Antonio, and of that 20%, 50% are women and head of households, we really do need to understand that anything we can do to help women's health where we can invest is a good and sound investment. The other is, federally, there are monies out there for more police officers and law enforcement and even innovative city street projects. So I think if any of my council colleagues are like, well, we could use this money for something else and we're on the fence, and the taxpayers which are sitting here have raised their hands and, you know, a number of them spoke in support of this. So I think the taxpayer argument really can't be used. I think you just need to go, this is a good investment, the return on investment will be there and it saves women's lives and it helps the people that are in poverty. So I look forward to getting to this vote and hearing from our residents as we move forward and see how we can help those with the budget that we have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Villagrand. Councilmember Cabeo Havera.
Thanks. Just a couple of follow-up points. Telling our mayor not to follow the women on council is the exact bias that is killing Texas women and the exact reason why we need this healthcare. We're never on the wrong end of a lawsuit when we, as representatives, are protecting our communities. And then to say that we're debating abortion today is entirely inaccurate. I haven't heard a single council member say abortion is right or it's wrong. Are they hiding behind, you know, tax dollars and saying they're pro-choice but not wanting to fund pro-choice activities? Sure. But we're not debating abortion. Nobody's talking about that. We're talking, again, about the human rights of every woman in this city. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabeo Havera. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you. If Jeff Coyle could come back up. I do have a question about SB 33. Is there an effective date written into the text?
It's as drafted right now, what was heard in committee last week would be effective September 1, 2025, if it passes.
Okay, and so should we approve, I don't know if this is a question for you, that's all I needed from you. Should we pass this today? What is the next step? Or I guess that could be anybody.
Councilman, probably health can answer that better, but I think the next step...
When do we imagine funds could be dispersed?
I think this is step one. I think there'll be a second step when the contracts are actually ready to be proposed to council that'll come before council again, Councilman. But I think, yeah, Claude can give further information.
Thank you, Councilman McKee Rodriguez. If we could go to slide 11 or 12? It shows a timeline.
Perfect.
Oh, keep going, one more. There we go. So next steps. This was part of a more formal presentation, but here we're listening to the discussion. We're looking at an accelerated review process. We would have to come back to council to consider the proposed contracts and then this would be scheduled to be implemented this summer.
I guess what I'm thinking about then is, or I guess maybe this is a question for Jeff Coyle, if you could bring yourself back. Is SB 33 retroactive in nature? Can it target cities that have spent money on travel?
I think that probably is a legal question. The bill allows a resident to bring a complaint or the Attorney General. And one of the remedies in the bill would be to halt or reverse the funding, but after it's been dispersed, I don't know. But I don't know if Andy does either.
As Jeff said, it's hard to predict what the legislature would pass, Councilman, but I would think there would be some significant deficiencies if they tried to retroactively apply a law like that. So my guess would be it would have some applicability after the fact, or I should say, it would not have applicability for activity that occurred before the effective date. And I do, I will say that we will design and write our contracts in such a way that whatever law passes, if it passes by the legislature, we will be able to pivot to be in compliance.
Sounds, I don't, I guess my question is then, would the dispersment of funds be as services are provided or is it all on the front end? At what point is it no longer city dollars being spent and city dollars that have been spent?
Councilmember, I'll answer that question. We're going to go through the expedited procurement as the staff talked through with Community Health Committee. We're going to get proposals quickly from those 10 entities. Likely, and I'm going to preface this with likely, likely for these types of services, we don't pay everything upfront. It is on a reimbursement or on a activity or whatever we're contracting for. So when the council, when we come back in June and the council authorizes the contract, it's authorizing us to execute it, but that doesn't mean that two days later, all the money's out the door. That's just not how we do contracts for services like that. So now, if activity begins as it's supposed to, then whatever payment method that we come to an agreement with, a lot of that is based on the proposals we get from the entities. But that's, we've got to kind of go through that step and see what they're proposing to us in terms of payment.
The root of my question, what I'm trying to get at, I think, is that should there be a world in which all the money is not spent by September 1st, this law goes into effect, that would prevent us from spending any more money? What are the mechanisms that we're going to use to ensure that we are compliant and that the money has, that the $400,000 is going to be allocated the way that we are intending today?
So you're not allocating today, you're just authorizing us to...
For a cause, for a cause.
Yeah, but you're, but you're authorizing us to move forward with the expedite. You're going to be authorizing the execution when we come back. So I think the answer to your question is the same. It depends on what we get, what kind of proposal we get. If we get a proposal to do X and a second proposal to do Y, we'll take that into consideration. That's, your question is helpful for us because that'll be likely what we want to make sure that we structure when we come back to you with the proposals. But a lot of that rests upon what we get from the entities.
Thanks, team.
And I understand, I understand what your question is and a lot of that will depend on what we get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Any further discussion on item 5? Okay, well, here's where I see it. After all of the strident rhetoric and debate, we are here today because of what has been an unrelenting assault on women's healthcare decisions in the state of Texas. Healthcare decisions that had been protected by Supreme Court precedent for 50 years. So when it comes to the choices that women make about their healthcare, critical healthcare, I trust women and doctors over politicians who think they know better. And so for me, this is easy. I will be supporting this item. So there is a motion and a second for approval of item 5. Please vote. We'll go now to item 21.
Item number 21 is an ordinance approving a contract with lift fund in the amount of $1,385,000 for administration of the Economic Development Department's 2025 Construction Mitigation Grant Program. Funding is from the Fiscal Year 2025 General Fund.
Councilmember Cor.
I forgot, I, in all of that conversation, I forgot we were going to bring up item 21. All right, well, thank you so much, Mayor, for the time on this and thank you to the Economic Development Team for working with us to get to a place where we can support all of our small businesses and organizations that have really been affected by construction. I think we all have an horror story on construction. I know there's a lot of frustration from our community because some of our projects have taken a really long time, so I'm grateful for the work that we're doing to really assess the small businesses that are being affected. In conversation of the construction mitigation grants, we had some organizations that come to us that are ineligible because of the current stipulations that are in place, but they are still affected by ticket sales. And that one of those organizations is particularly the Magic Theater that does a lot of great work for children in our community and provides art for a lot of our low-income schools that get to access it. But as a result of the construction, field trips have gone down significantly, ticket sales have gone down significantly. They have had, 40% of the feedback on their surveys say that construction is the reason that people are upset about the work there and they've also lost 8,000 patrons in the 2024-2025 season, and that wasn't as a result of COVID. So there was an increase passed after COVID and then there's been a decrease since the construction has started. If you've tried accessing that, the space there, it is very difficult to get to. And so because of that, there might be other organizations that are similar where we haven't gotten any from that, but I wanted to make an amendment to the grant program.
Councilmember Cor, let me get a base motion and then you can make your amendment as a motion.
Oh, I see, okay, cool.
Is there a motion on item 1?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second for item 21, Councilmember Cor.
Okay, so with that, I just want to... So with that, I just want to make a motion to move to amend the eligibility for the Stabilization Construction Grant Program to include nonprofit venues that rely primarily on revenue from ticket sales for in-person attendance at a series of events or programs.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second for amending the motion on item 21. So we'll take up the whole discussion together, but we'll vote on the amendment first before we get to the base motion. So are you yielding the floor? Okay. Is there any further discussion on item 21? Councilmember White.
Yeah, just briefly. Excited about this item. This, you know, Construction Mitigation Grant Program is something that we talked about, you know, two years ago, that Councilwoman Core has been great on, as well as Councilman McKee Rodriguez. We all talked about it in the beginning. There's so many businesses that are hurting because of the lengthy time of city-initiated construction. So happy that we're moving this forward today. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember White. I don't have a queue. Any further discussion on item 21? Councilmember McKee Rodriguez?
Thank you. And I have another amendment I'd like to add, so I don't know how that changes procedure. Okay, cool. So I want to add that the North New Braunfels Corridor has been impacted for years by construction, both Phase 1 and now Phase 2. Last time we did dispersments, two out of over 100 eligible businesses on North New Braunfels received grants despite road closures that led to at least five businesses closing their doors and dozens more experiencing tremendous loss. These roads were ripped up and repaved and ripped up over and over and over again. We had a bad contractor on that job, many of my colleagues are familiar with. And so I would like to make, I would like to move to include businesses along the North New Braunfels Avenue Corridor, Phase 1, Phase 2, into this program.
All right. There's a motion and a second for amending the main motion as stated by Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. So we have two amendments on the floor. That's all we can have on the floor at the same time. So if there's anything further, we're going to have to get through a couple of these votes first. But Andy, did you want to address procedure?
That is correct, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council that only two amendments can be on the floor, and the first amendment takes priority in terms of consideration.
Okay. All right. So we're going to vote on the first amendment made by Councilmember Core first, then McKee Rodriguez's amendment, unless there's something else that comes up. So Councilmember Courage.
Thank you. I just have a question because maybe I didn't hear correctly. When you were suggesting, were you suggesting an area so that any business along that area becomes eligible to request that funding?
Yes, along the North New Braunfels Corridor, so that street.
Do you have any idea how many businesses there are there?
There are at least, there's a little under 10 businesses as a part of Phase 2. There's significantly more along Phase 1 that have been impacted by Phase 1 and will continue to be impacted by Phase 2.
I know also, well, okay. Then that really answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage. Any further discussion on the amendments or on the base motion? All right. Now we're going to go to votes. We're going to vote on Councilmember Core's amendment first. Does anyone need it read? Okay. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and repeat it? Thank you, Councilmember.
A move to amend the eligibility for the Stabilization Construction Grants Program to include nonprofit venues that rely primarily on revenue from ticket sales for in-person attendance at a series of events or programs.
All right. You heard it. There is a motion and a second for the amendment. Motion carries. And so the main motion has now been amended to include the language from Councilmember Core. Now we'll vote on Councilmember McKee Rodriguez's amendment. And Councilman, if you can still, if you can restate your amendment.
Thank you. Move to amend the program to include businesses along North New Braunfels Avenue, Phase 1 and Phase 2.
All right. You heard it. Without further discussion, please vote. Motion carries. All right. So the main motion on item 21, we'll take that up now. It has been amended by both McKee Rodriguez as well as Core. Any further discussion? And Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, just a clarification. The motion on, that Councilwoman McKee Rodriguez made is that there's three components to the grant program. We're just looking for some clarity. Is it the pre, post, or active? Or maybe a combination?
A combination of active and post.
Active and post. Okay.
Thank you.
Mine was active.
Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Brenda, Alex, and team for this initiative and moving it forward during the Economic Development Committee meeting. I had a question regarding ensuring district-by-businesses that were impacted by a bond project had an opportunity to participate. I'm pleased to see that you all have included that section of that bond project to be included to potentially receive support through this initiative. So just want to thank you all for being amendable and for including that small piece of D5 that would be impacted. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Core, Councilmember Castillo. You said amendable. Never mind. All right. There's a motion and a second for item 21 as amended by Councilmember Core and Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Motion carries. All right. Before we go to the City Managers' Report, I'm just going to let everybody know there's already folks here for the 2 o'clock zoning. We do have an exec, but we're going to do zoning first and do our exec at the end. And so, Andy, we can do that because I think exec is posted, isn't it?
Yes, we can do that, Mayor.
So what I'm going to do after we're done with the City Managers' Report is to recess our A session. We're going to start our zoning agenda. After we get through zoning, we'll get back to our A session, go into exec, and then we'll come back to close it. So if you got confused by all of that, don't worry. We're going to get to zoning immediately. But I'm just letting the staff know so they can get zoning prepared after we get through the City Managers' Report. So Eric, City Managers' Report.
Two things, Mayor. Thank you. And one of them is kind of related to zoning. Melissa Ramirez, today's her 30th anniversary with the city. So hopefully zoning goes real smooth today. The second item is our Spotlight Video, Mayor. Obviously, we're in Women's History Month, and I wanted to highlight one of our executives, Chief Frostow. Chief Frostow has been incredible to work with these first five months. I, you know, a lot of what I gauge in terms of how well someone's doing, usually it's a lot of different factors. But I'll tell you, I have been approached by retired firefighters, active firefighters, and really a lot of validation. I have enjoyed working with her for the first five months. She's got a great story and a great attitude, and I love the confidence that she instills. So let's roll today's video.
When I jump off the officer seat, which is the front passenger, I would hear, "Look, Mom, it's a girl." Surprising people that, under the helmet or under the bunker coat, it's a girl. And, yeah, you know, we do this work too. There weren't a lot of women that were firefighters, and I just thought that it was a career that it wasn't possible. I knew that it was a male-dominated career. I learned very quickly that determination and just having the courage to be successful in the role of a firefighter and to serve my community, I just knew that I was going to just have to work harder than the others. I had to prove myself every step of the way. Training and just being the best that we can absolutely be is my vision for this fire department. We have to continuously improve. We have to be prepared for anything. We truly do make a difference in the lives of, you know, the people in this community. It is so rewarding. Professionalism is extremely important. I have very high expectations, and everybody knows that about me. Also, the innovation piece. I mean, constantly trying to improve. Improving response times is important to us. Really, the collaboration, the man staff all the way down the ranks. It amazes me every day how they work together, and they accomplish the mission. Being San Antonio's Fire Chief is truly an honor. I take this job very, very seriously, as do all the members of the fire department. We are truly dedicated, committed to providing a service, serving and protecting is what makes me feel good.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Melissa.
All right. Congratulations, Melissa. Thank you very much, Eric. At this time, it is 2:10 PM on April 3, 2025. I will recess our A session so that we can begin our zoning agenda. And Madam Clerk, are we ready? We need five minutes? Okay. Why don't we recess for five minutes so our clerks can get our agenda prepared, but we will be back at 2:15 to start zoning. So thank you very much for your patience. but we will be back at 2:15 to start zoning. So thank you very much for your patience. Good afternoon, everyone. If you can begin to take your seats, we are going to get our zoning agenda started. The time is 2:20 PM on the third day of April 2025. We will call our zoning agenda to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Councilmember Corr.
President.
Councilmember Mickey Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Viagraan.
Here.
Councilmember Brocha Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Gabeo Haberda.
Here.
Councilmember Alarete Gavito.
Here.
Councilmember Belice. Councilmember Courage.
Present.
Councilmember White. Mayor Narenberg.
Here.
Mayor Wehave Corum.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our zoning agenda. We have, I'm going to go through our procedure today. We have two items that have been withdrawn, will not be heard today, items seven and eight. Okay, so those are struck from the agenda, seven and eight. We have one item that will be continued to May 15, 2025. That is item number four. And then we have several other items that will be heard individually, items 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, and 21. Everything else is going to be heard on consent. And so let me ask now my colleagues if there are any items to pull from the consent agenda to be heard individually.
If I have to submit an update on deeds, do I have to pull it or just submit them? Yeah, deed restrictions.
Yeah.
You need me to pull it?
Yeah.
Two and three.
Okay, items two and three will be heard individually. Any others? Okay, let's first hear a motion on item four for continuation to May 15.
Motion made.
There's a motion and a second for item four to be continued to May 15, 2025. There is no one signed up to speak on item four. Is there any council discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Okay, so item four will be heard again on May 15. These are the items that remain on consent, items one, five, six, nine, 10, 11, 15, 19, 20, 22, and 23. I'll entertain a motion for those items. There's a motion by Viagraan and a second by Castillo. We do have folks signed up to speak on consent items. I'll call you in order. We'll start with Jack Finger on item one.
Mayor Narenberg, other members of the city council, my name is Jack Finger, and item number one is an alcohol variance. And Ms. Carr, it's in your district. It's located over at the, near the Hawthorne Academy, over on, well, let's see, what's the name of the street there? It's, that doesn't give the name. Yeah, Grace, West Grayson. Ms. Carr, I think you maybe even continued this earlier, previous point, and I would, well, I would just say, I think you need to just say no to this altogether because it's just three, less than 300 feet away from where the school kids play. So Ms. Carr, would you please put item one on your, the portion for individual consideration and say no to this thing? Ms. Carr? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. All right, that is everyone who signed up to speak on items that are consent. Everything else will be heard individually. Oh, I'm sorry. Dominique Litwitz? Is Dominique Litwitz here on items 22 and 23? Okay, if that's it, then we'll go to council discussion. Councilmember Castillo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight items 10 and 11, and thank the applicant Marco, as well as the Collins Garden Neighborhood Association. This was a property that had been vacant and a nuisance for quite some time, and we're grateful for Marco for activating this spot and for bringing a great neighbor as well, and being in communication with the Collins Garden Association and the nearby folks. So just thank you all for y'all's engagement with community, and I look forward to supporting this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Castillo, Councilmember Viagraan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to enter in the letter of support from Harlandell McCullum Neighborhood Association for item number nine. They believe it will be a great addition to the community, and a needed one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viagraan. Any further discussion on the consent zoning agenda? Okay, hearing none, there's a motion and a second for the items that remain on consent as I previously read. Please vote. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go now to our individual items. We'll start with items two and three.
Agenda item number two is a rezoning from R4 to C1S with the specific use authorization for non-commercial parking lot located at 2310 Santa Monica Street and 2314 Santa Monica Street. Staff and zoning commission recommend approval. 19 notices mailed, zero in favor, zero opposed. Los Angeles Heights Neighborhood Association is opposed.
All right, Councilmember Corr.
Yeah, I want to thank my team and Cameron specifically, given all of the conversation this morning for his work in getting Los Angeles Heights to support in partnership with the applicant. And the way that they did that was by requesting deed restrictions that I would like to submit to the record, which I believe the clerk already has. So I want to approve as amended. Motion to approve as amended. With the deed restrictions.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of items two and three with the deed restrictions amendment. Gabeo Haberda. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Items 11, excuse me, 12 and 13.
Agenda item number 12 and 13, amending the Port San Antonio Area Regional Center Plan from community commercial to urban low-density residential from C2NA to R4 located at 2435 Frioz City Road. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. 17 notices mailed, three in favor, and zero opposed. And let me just clarify, Planning Commission and Zoning Commission recommends approval. I just wanted to make sure I clarified that for the record. And Thomas Neighborhood Association is in support.
Great. We do have one citizen signed up to speak on items 12 and 13. Jack Finger.
Mayor Narenberg, other members of the council, my name is Jack Finger, and this particular zoning case is in District Five. Ms. Castillo, your district, yes. The, Ms. Castillo, it's about a downzoning from commercial to residential. And normally, I actually think such a situation of downzoning is, I normally am in favor of such, but there are times when it is really totally inappropriate. The reason the zoning staff thought that it was a bad idea, the reason the planning staff thought it was a bad idea, is because when you're placing residents in this area, they are going to be extremely unhappy. This area is going to be, is mainly composed of storage areas for trucks, equipment, things like that there. And zoning staff that said, no, residents really should not have to live among that, and so let's, let's not even try. So Ms. Castillo, I would encourage you to just simply say, say no to these two items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Like many school districts throughout the city that are facing with the decision of school closures, Edgewood ISD is not exempt from that, and this is an area in which we do need more housing, and I'm grateful that the Thompson Association is in support of this, and with that, I motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of items 12 and 13. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item 14.
Mayor, I'm going to have to clarify. I need to read into the record Agenda item number three because the action we took was only on Agenda item number two earlier when we did the covenants and restrictions, so I do need to read officially in number three.
Okay, why don't we do that now?
Yes, sir. So this is a zoning case from R4 to C2NA, generally located at the 2300 block of Sacramento Street. Staff and zoning commission recommend approval. 32 notices mailed, zero in favor, zero opposed. Los Angeles Heights Neighborhood Association is also opposed.
All right, so we did approve item two as amended, and so item three needs a separate vote. Councilmember Corr.
I motion to approve as amended with deed restrictions.
Okay, there was a motion. Was there a second on item three?
Councilwoman Castillo.
All right, motion and a second for approval as amended on item three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Back to item 14.
Yes, sir. Rezoning from I2 to C2CD with conditional use for motor vehicle sales, full service, located at 2131 Frioz City Road. Staff and zoning commission recommend approval with conditions, no temporary sign, bandit signs, snip, signs, or wind waivers. 18 notices mailed, three in favor, and zero opposed.
This one is in item, excuse me, in District Five. There's no one citizen signed up to speak. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Melissa. With this item, I motion to approve with conditions.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item 14 with conditions. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item 16.
Agenda item number 16 is a rezoning from R4 to R4CD with a conditional use for four dwelling units located at 327 Bear Drive. Staff recommends denial with an alternate recommendation for three dwelling units. Zoning Commission recommends approval as requested by the applicant. 29 notices mailed, zero in favor, one opposed, and there was one opposed outside the 200-foot boundary.
All right, we have one citizen signed up to speak on item 16. Jack Finger.
Mayor Narenberg, other members of the council, once again, my name is Jack Finger, and on this particular case, it happens to be in District Seven. Ms. Gavito, your district, it's about the idea of, well, in my words, shoehorning four units, four dwelling units over into this little lot over on Bear Drive in your area. Yeah, staff thought that was a bad idea. They suggested you say no to it. Yes, the, basically, in their words, it said it makes it just too dense, too dense for all the surrounding family residences who have to live in these areas. So, Ms. Gavito, if you would kindly say no to this excessive density, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. Councilmember Alarete Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. I motion to approve this item with the revised site plan and staff's recommendation of three units.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of item 16 with the renewed site, reviewed site plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item 17.
Agenda item number 17 is a rezoning from C2NA and R6 to C1CD with a conditional use for office warehouse flex space located at 11006 Banderas Road. Staff and zoning commission recommend denial. The applicant submitted a revised site plan and amended to add the following conditions: access to Bering Lane is for emergency use only. 25 notices mailed, zero in favor, and one opposed.
All right, we have a couple of folks signed up to speak on this one. Council, oh, excuse me, Edwin Vidal? You're passing. Okay, thank you, Mr. Vidal. Jack Finger?
Mayor Narenberg, other members of the council, I, Jack Finger, also here once again to say this. The proposal is a slight downzoning from, well, what is it, C2 to C1, and normally, that seems to be a good idea, but it's not this time. So bad that both the staff and the zoning commission said, no, do not do this. Why? The conditional use for a warehouse, it's going to, in their words, offer commercial encroachment. Yes, if you've ever been in a neighborhood and you've seen various buildings, commercial buildings going up around you, and you think to yourself, well, what happened to all the livable area that we used to have? It's just going to be drab buildings that our kids can always have to walk by every time they go to school. No, commercial encroachment, it's a very real problem, and you really don't want that to happen in your neighborhood. And Ms. Gavito, maybe you really shouldn't have it happen in this neighborhood. So, and I say, that's, that's right over there, just on Banderas Road there. So please say no to this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. This is in District Seven. Councilmember Alarete Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to applicant Edwin Vidal for being here today. I motion to approve this with the revised site plan and conditions as read.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of item 17 with an amended site plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Item 18.
Agenda item number 18 is amending the Camp Bullis ETJ Protection Land Use Plan from community commercial and low-density residential to community commercial located at 28295 Interstate 10 West. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. Applicant is amending the subject property from 2.216 acres to 1.216 acres.
Applicant is amending the subject property from two-point-two-one-six acres to one-point-three-four-two acres. Ten notices has been mailed, zero in favor, and three opposed. I'm sorry, and three opposed outside the two-hundred-foot boundary.
All right, this is in the ETJ of District Eight. Councilmember Palais.
So unless Ashley Fairimond wants to come up here and do a, an entire presentation, I'm just going to go ahead and move to approve as read into the record.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval of item eighteen as read. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries, item twenty-one.
Agenda item number twenty-one is rezoning from C two to C two S with a specific use for a car wash located at fifteen zero fifteen Jones Maltzberger Road. Staff and zoning commission recommend denial. An applicant submitted a revised site plan for revisions. Twenty-two notices mailed, one in favor, six opposed, and there was eleven opposed outside the two-hundred-foot boundary.
All right, we have several folks signed up to speak on item ten.
And Mayor, if I can, I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention that this will require a supermajority vote.
Got it. All right, we have five folks signed up to speak on item twenty-one. We'll start with Brandon Babcock. Mr. Babcock, you'll be followed by Eunice Flores.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
No, I was just calling the next person so they can get ready.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My name is Brandon Babcock. Thank you for hearing me. I, I actually run, maintain, and own several car washes, one of those being on Thousand Oaks. In the District Twelve, or District Ten area, there are over twenty-plus car washes in there. That particular area that you're talking about putting another car wash into is on Jones Maltzberger, literally on one of the busier corners of that area. There are constantly traffic jams, car accidents in that particular location. But what you're talking about putting in is basically, you could call Thousand Oaks and turn it into the Car Wash Mile. There's going to be a car wash going in near two-eighty-one and Thousand Oaks. There's my, the car wash that I actually run, the secondary car wash that, system that we have. You have two others, one on Jones Maltzberger already. As you keep going down, there are three other self-serve car washes going down in that same direction. So you basically are going to be turning Thousand Oaks and Jones Maltzberger into, like I said, the Car Wash Mile. Now, the second thing is, is you're putting a car wash right next to a subdivision. Our car wash doesn't sit anywhere near a subdivision. You can Google it, and a car wash, just the blowers alone, generate between eighty and ninety decibels. That's the equivalent of a jetliner coming in at a thousand feet. So you talk about having that every two to three minutes whenever a car wa, whenever a car is going through, it is going to be ridiculous for the people that actually live there. My customers, who are all members of my car wash, have told me and told me about this, and that's why I'm here today, is to tell them, to tell you guys, this is not a, putting a car wash in and, and butting up against a residential subdivision is not a good idea. I understand, I approve, I love capitalism, and I, I bring on, you know, competition, but you're putting it in, into an area where people are not going to be happy about it. They will oppose it. And I'm, I've heard that from several other people. I only found out about this change only a couple of days ago. So, I can tell you, the people that wanted to be here could not be here. And they've asked me to also speak for them and say, hey, we do not want this right there. And that's about it. And you can ask me any subject matter questions, I've been doing this for over five years now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Babcock. Right, next is Eunice Flores. Ms. Flores, you'd be followed by Andrew Flores.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the neighborhood. Our house, we live at twenty-seven thirty-four Pebble Breeze, which would be right up against this car wash. I realize that they updated their plans for a two-story building now, which in fact would not have anything to affect, as the gentleman before me that said, the decibels. It's going to go over whatever fence or wall they want to build. It's going to hit our home. The neighborhood as an entirety, we've spoken, and we do not want it at all. It's infringing on our privacy. My neighbors have a pool, it's not at all wanted. We don't want strangers looking into us. The noise level's going to be atrocious. We hear right now McDonald's drive-through, the traffic on that corner is ridiculous. There's an accident there at least every other day, if not every two days, because of that. People are going to be cutting through our neighborhood to go around that traffic. It puts our kids in danger. That's not what we need or want in our, our neighborhood. We have elderly, retired military in our neighborhood, and we don't want that at all. It is designated, I believe, as a C two. We would like to keep it at that. We will more than welcome other types of businesses. This company that is coming in and wanting to do this car wash, they have five other locations that they're trying to put in at the same time. They're from out of town, they're from out of Texas. If we're going to help and do something there at that property, why not let it be some, a small business owner from our own community, or from within Texas, to benefit another Texan, or someone in San Antonio? Why do we allow somebody from outside of San Antonio, outside of Texas, to benefit? I, I, and our neighbors would approve a retail, a doctor's office, anything, another restaurant, but definitely not a car wash. They did provide the updated version of their, and I had that map as well. So that's pretty much about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Andrew Flores. Ms. Flores, you'll be followed by Brandon Dennison.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our neighbors. My name is Andrew Flores. I live directly behind the proposed car wash zoning area where they want to build it, at twenty-seven thirty-four Pebble Breeze. Our core concerns, we neighbors are not against having a business behind our houses. We would welcome a professional office, retail store, another restaurant on the, on the former Pizza Hut site. The lot is too small for a car wash at, sitting at zero-point-six-three acres. It is one-third smaller than the one acre preferred by, by the developer. Because of the size limitation, the outdoor commercial activity at a car wash would be too close to our properties. The developer has proposed a two-story car wash tunnel whose height of thirty-two-eight inches exceeds the twenty-five-foot limit in a C dash-two zoning district. We want to retain the C two zoning designation because it provides a buffer between our properties and more intensive commercial uses such as a car wash. Thus, we request that, that our city council deny the C two S rezoning request. Also, our neighbors are just, they're, they're concerned about the, the noise, the, the problems that may occur. There's just so many problems that may occur with this, with this car wash. And I'm here, thank you to you guys for listening to me, and I just want to oppose this car wash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Brandon Dennison. Mr. Dennison, you'd be followed by Jack Finger.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brandon Dennison, and I represent the applicant on this matter, Lone Star Builders, who is the developer for Quick Quack Car Wash. I want to spend most of my time addressing some of the concerns that have been brought up, mostly about, about noise. I would like to mention that we produced a sound study done by a third party, which the results found that the existing decibel levels of the street there at the residential line are fifty-nine decibels. And the, and the existing noise plus the proposed car wash would raise that to just sixty-one decibels. That's only a two-decibel difference. And in order to be perceptible to the human ear, we would have to have three decibels. I have a little presentation here, I'll quickly go through it. Quick Quack is at the forefront of water reclamation. We recycle ninety-nine percent of all water used. Only twenty-six gallons of water, of new water, is used on each car wash. If you wash your car in your driveway, you would use close to a hundred gallons of water. So we actually, it sounds counterintuitive, but we save water for the city of San Antonio. Quick Quack is a convenience location, there's been concerns about traffic, and we are not a, a destination. We generally do not increase the traffic on roads. People pop into our locations on their way to and from their other destinations. Like I mentioned with the, with the sound study, the city of San Antonio requirement at the residential property line would be a decibel level of sixty-three, and we are below that by two decibels. We have proposed a fifteen-foot landscape buffer with, between us and the resident, and residential lots, and as well, a fifteen-foot masonry wall to block all sound. The amended site plan, although considered a two-story, like the previous gentleman said, is a little over thirty-two feet, which based on city code, we can exceed twenty-five feet based on the, on increasing our setback from the property line. And this tunnel is longer than most tunnels. The actual blowers of the car wash, which are the loudest part of the car wash, are inside the tunnel by forty feet. So there will be forty feet between the blowers and the exit of the car wash. This will create essentially imperceptible increase in noise in the area. As you can see here, here is the proposed site plan. This is an elevation, as you can see, it's a beautiful building, really is a good thing to look at from the street. Another thing about Quick Quack is we do fundraising, and we donate to families in cities where we build new car washes. With over two-hundred locations, we have helped over two-hundred families. I would also like to mention that we are abiding by each requirement set forth in the city code, in the S U A specific use authorization. We would ask the city council, I ask Councilman White as well, to uphold our property rights as well as everyone else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Jack Finger.
Mayor Nurenburg, other members of the council. My name is Jack Finger, and this item, once again, is in Mr. White's district. You know, Mr. White, car washes, we, they are, they can be a convenience for, for many of us, but even those who use car washes would not necessarily want one in their own backyard. And this is practically where this one is going to be placed. The zoning staff and the zoning commission thought these were bad ideas for that very reason. It's right next to the, the residence on that street. In fact, this is not just, it's not, it's not even across the street, it's just across the lane, as we saw in the diagram there. As many as, when you have as many as nine people coming to, to the zoning session, eight of them in person, saying, please do not do this, and when you have as many as, well, four people outside of the, the two-hundred-foot zone petitioning, saying no, this is something to take a close look at. The, the gentleman before me mentioned it's going to be just a fifteen-foot buffer. I don't know about that. Before you say yes to this, have the zoning staff come forward and just simply say, hey, is this, are these buffers really going to work? You know? So anyway, just some food for thought here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. Councilmember White.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I want to thank the neighbors for being very, very involved in this matter from the beginning. I want to thank the developer as well for, for his efforts. I'll tell you, I'm, I love small businesses, I welcome more small businesses in District Ten. Unfortunately, this is one that is being proposed for, for the wrong site. It's, it's much, much too close to the neighborhood. We had unanimous denial at zoning commission, staffs recommend, now, this isn't the right spot for, for this car wash. So I make a motion for denial.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second for denial of item twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Okay, again, a yes vote is to deny the item, a no vote would be to go back to the drawing board, so please vote. Motion carries. All right, that is the balance of our zoning agenda. The time is two fifty-five P M. on the third day of April twenty-twenty-five, and we, our zoning agenda is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. At two fifty-five P M. on the third day of April twenty-twenty-five, I will now reconvene our A session that was previously recessed. And at the same time, I'm going to call us into executive session. So the time is two fifty-five P M. on Thursday, April third, twenty-twenty-five. The city council of the city of San Antonio will now meet in executive session and consult with the city attorney's office pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code and deliberate discuss the following items: economic development negotiations pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-eight-seven, purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, and legal issues related to litigation involving the city, emergency preparedness, and collective bargaining all pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one. pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one.